It's six o'clock on March 27, 2023. I will call this meeting of the Chelmsford Select Board to order. Please join me in the pledge.
Aye. Pledge of the flag. And I am saying. Continue to love your justice system. One nation under God. Indivisible. The liberty of justice. Just as well.
Okay, first up, we have our public service announcements. Ken?
So our first, our first announcement is we have a local election on Tuesday, April 4th. Every vote counts. The polls open at 7:00 a.m., close at 8:00 p.m. The deadlines to register a vote, those were passed, right, the 24th? So don't have to announce those. The deadline to apply for mail-in ballot is Tuesday, the 28th, that's tomorrow, by 5:00 p.m. Mail-in ballots must be received back to the town clerk's office by 8:00 p.m. on election night. Polling locations on election day are as follows. Precincts 1 and 2 at the Senior Center, which is located at 75 Groton Road. Precincts 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8 are located at McCarthy Middle School on 250 North Road. Precincts 9, 10, and 11 are here at the town offices in the gym down on the first floor on the backside of the building at 50 Bill Recker Road. And if you go to the town website, you can click on precinct maps to see what precinct you're in if you have any questions. Our next announcement is learn how to recognize an overdose and save a life. It's free Narcan training. Free Narcan will be giving out to those who attend the training. It will be presented by the Chelmsford Report of Health on Wednesday, April 11th at 6:00 p.m. And again, on April 26th at 2:00 p.m. They will be downstairs in the Town Hall Fire Department Training Room on our lower level. It's open to all. You are required to register. And you can register at www.chelmsfordma.gov. And space is limited. If you have any questions, feel free to call the Health Department at 978-250-5241. Our next notice is also from the Chelmsford Health. This is Care Solace, Mental Health Referral Service for Chelmsford residents and employees of the town. If you have any questions, again, you can call the Health Department. Care Solace, they care about your well-being and partner with Care Solace as a mental health care coordination service to help you and your family connect to quality care. This is at no cost to you. Care Solace will help you confidentially find available mental health and substance abuse treatment providers matched to your needs and the insurance you carry. There is 24/7, 365-day-a-week multilingual support care regardless of your insurance carrier and easy access to care. Connect today. You can go to caresolace.com/chelmsford-ma or call 888-515-7881. And remember, it is okay to ask for help. The last one, presented again by the Chelmsford Health Department, is Healthy Relationships. And this is understanding abuse, setting boundaries, and identifying warning signs to look for. This is going to be held Wednesday, April 19th. At 1:00 p.m. or 6:00 p.m., you only need to want to attend one session. It's going to be repeated. This will be at the Chelmsford Public Library in McCarthy Meeting Room. If you have any questions, you can email mcameron, C-A-M-E-R-O-N, at chelmsfordma.gov or call 978-250-5241 for more information. These notices, by the way, are on the website. And for the ones that have the QRC codes, you can scan those there for additional information, too.
Thank you, Ken. Next up, we have public input. If you are here to provide public input on the discussion with State Representative Elliott, we do have a separate public input segment for that, so I'll ask that you hold your comments until then. Is there anyone that would like to speak on any other topic during public input? Yep, just come to the podium and please give your name and address for the record. And while that individual is coming up, we've got a lot of people in the audience tonight. I would just remind you that when you speak out there, your voices really carry up here. So if you do need to have a conversation during the course of the meeting, we just ask that you take it out into the hallway. Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Laura Amundson. I live on 2 Swain Road. I'm the homeowner, and it's registered underneath my maiden name, Laura Rogers. I live on Swain Road. I know that we'll be discussing other elements of that this evening, but in terms of public input, talk of a rotary, I haven't heard of this talk before, but I want to state, I am opposed to that as that homeowner. This is not about the speed. This is about the trucks, okay? So that would adversely affect my property value and my neighbors' property values. All right? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak during public input? I'm not seeing anyone here or in the Zoom room, so we will move on to committee vacancies.
Committee vacancies for the week of March 27th. We're down to about a half a page now.
Oh.
Yeah, that's great. So first up, we have Commissions on Disabilities. We're looking to fill one seat. That's a three-year term. The Community Action Program Committee, they have four seats available, one-year terms. Community Preservation Fund Committee has one three-year term. The Council on Aging Board, one three-year term. Holiday Decorating Committee has one one-year term. The Parade Committee, as always, all applicants are welcome. Those are one-year terms. They expire each July 31st. Permit Building Committee is a one-year, is a one-seat, three-year term. Recycling Committee has one one-year term. If you're interested in serving on any town board or committee, please complete an online application available on the town website. For more information, you can contact the Town Manager's Office at 978-250-5202, or you can email the Town Manager's Office at tmoffice@chelmsfordma.gov.
Thank you, Ken. Next up, we have the continued public hearing for the transfer of the All Alcoholic Beverages Package Store License for Six Brothers Lincoln LLC, doing business as Lincoln Liquors. Do we have anyone here from the applicant?
Good evening. Attorney John Maradi is here via Zoom. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Sir, is there anything you would like to add since our last meeting?
Nothing I'd like to add. Any questions from the board, happy to answer, but there's been no changes since our meeting two weeks ago.
Okay. Are there any questions from the board? And this is a public hearing. Do we have any public input on this particular license transfer? Okay, seeing none, I will take a motion.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five-zero. Last round, is there any further discussion? Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the All Alcohol Beverage Package Store License from All Liquors, Inc., DBA Lincoln Liquors, to Six Brothers Lincoln LLC, doing business as Lincoln Liquors, to be executed on the premises at 10 Summer Street.
You need to include the pledge of inventory, because if you don't, we had to come back and redo it one time.
You just redo the motion and read the whole thing off the agenda.
Oh, you want it off there? Okay.
There you go.
So I'll make a motion to approve the transfer of the All Alcohol Beverages Package Store License, pledge of collateral, pledge of inventory, change of hours from Six Brothers Lincoln LLC, Lincoln Liquors, 10 Summer Street, from All Liquors, Inc., DBA Lincoln Liquors.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five-zero. You're all set. Good luck.
Take care. Have a good night.
Yep.
Good luck.
Okay, next up, we have the Common Vigiler License for Dave's Hot Chicken. Do we have anybody here for the applicant?
Yes, Bob Quinlan's here via Zoom.
Do you want to just give an overview of what you want to do?
Sure. We're taking over the space that used to be Einstein's Bagels, and we're going to build it out to accommodate a Dave's Hot Chicken, which is chicken sandwiches, Great Sick Chicken sandwiches that you can get to certain heat levels, no spice, all the way up to a Reaper. And we also have chicken tenders, french fries, and coleslaw, and mac and cheese. And we're hoping that we open sometime in early, in early June.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board?
Yeah, I have a question about the outdoor seating. How much, how many seats were there before? Do you, do you know outside?
I don't believe there were many seats there before.
Yeah, next door had some.
Boston Chicken has them.
Right. They didn't have them.
So we were hoping to extend the patio, which we presented a layout to, to the building department, and which would extend the patio about a 10-by-20-foot piece of concrete that would be on the side of the building. And we were hoping to just have 20 seats outside that we would only obviously have out there from, from May till October.
And, and those would be separate? They would not be that you would take from outside, from inside and go outside? They would be permanent outside?
Yes, correct.
All right. Okay, so I'll head.
Any other questions?
I'm assuming you're aware of the comments that are still open with Board of Health, et cetera?
Yes, and I believe those have been taken care of as of late last week, because we did receive our building permit today.
Anything else? No, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the Common Vigiler License for GQ Chicken, Chelmsford LLC, doing business as Dave's Hot Chicken, to be exercised on the premises of 40 Drumhill Road.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five-zero. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you so much. We look forward to it.
Okay, next up, we have reports and presentations. You want to introduce us, Paul?
Yeah, we're fortunate this evening to be joined by State Representative Rodney Elliott, who's come back from the discussion he had with the board a few meetings back to discuss some potential legislation pertaining to the Ledge Road quarry commercial truck traffic.
Thank you for coming.
You're welcome. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Manager, Mr. Counsel. My name is Rodney Elliott. For those who may not know me, I am a state representative from the 16th Middle Sex District, which includes parts of Lowell, as well as Westlands and North Chelmsford. Let me start by thanking you, thanking you for giving me the opportunity to come before you and the residents of, of Chelmsford. I come to you tonight relative to the ongoing commercial traffic situation and to me, the enormous and intrusive traffic on Ledge Roads, Swain Road, Main Street, as well as other roadways impacted by gravel operations on Ledge Road. Now, as a former city councilor, I applaud your efforts to help the neighbors. Many communities, not just Chelmsford, are going through similar situations, and in my own city of Lowell, we've had very similar situations. I also recognize, I was at the last meeting, and I listened intently from the presentation from the Northern Council, Northern Middle Sex Council of Governments on options as well. It was a little over a month ago when they presented their alternative findings. I, I come before you tonight after, about a year ago, I started knocking on doors and listening to the residents in that area, as well as experience over the course of the summer, the impact that these gravel operations have had on the neighborhood, quality of life, health, safety. I did submit a letter. I'm not going to read the letter, because everybody can read. I'd like to speak to some of those points. After being sworn in about, you know, two months ago, three months ago now, I want to fulfill my campaign commitment to the residents of that area to try to bring a resolution from the state perspective. I know Mass DOT governs roadways, as well as many other aspects of transportation. And I met with House Counsel, who is the, the attorneys for the House of Representatives. They presented two options, which I have included in the letter tonight. One option is to file a home rule petition to restrict weight limits on a town road. The other option, as included in the letter, is to continue, I filed a placeholder legislation, which will apply across the state, not just to the town of Chelmsford, but any roadways affected by commercial traffic to and from quarries. So that, that's why I come before you tonight. I'm happy to take questions. I think my letter is self-explanatory. I, again, I realize the town has been, has been dealing with this and approaching this in any way possible. I feel as a state representative, this is, this is another alternative. This is another option in order to try, to try to solve the problem, the problem that exists on vehicles going in and out. I will also say, sometime when gravel operations do start up again this summer, I have contacted the Commissioner's Office and the Department of Environmental Protection, following conversations, as well as my own observations on the impact of, I'll say, air quality, that result, and you can see the residue and what, you know, the, the impact that that operation has on, on neighbors. So I'm going to stop here, and I look forward to some questions and some thoughts. But I do think, you know, home rule petition, should the board decide to move forward, I'd be happy to speak. I'd be, I'd be honored to present it on behalf of the town and the neighbors that have to, the neighbors that have to deal with this on, on a regular basis. So again, I'll close by applauding the efforts. I realize they have been extensive. I understand, you know, again, Mass DOT, and there are uniform practices of traffic code through the federal government that can be applied, and, and it's complicated. But Chapter 85 of the Mass General Laws, as well as Chapter 90, govern commercial vehicles, roadways, requirements, restrictions, and I believe this is by far worth the effort to file a home rule petition to restrict the gross vehicle weight on, on that roadway. So again, thank you for your time and happy to take questions.
So Representative Elliott, what I would recommend is that we start with questions and comments from the board, Manager Cohen or Town Counsel Haverdy, and then we'll open it up for public input. Do that.
Sounds good.
So from this table?
I'll go.
Yep.
I was interested for anyone who can answer. I'm not sure if you can, Representative, or not. But of these two options that are there, it seems to me one that's more specific to Ledge Road might have a better chance of getting through as opposed to a statewide? I don't know if that's true or not. What's anybody's thoughts on that?
I, I think that's very.
Can you get the mic?
Yes.
Thank you.
I think that that is, is a very accurate point. I, I think the more general legislation and certainly Representative Elliott can speak to this probably better than me, but I, I think the chances of getting something that applies statewide is far less likely than there is to get something applying specifically to this roadway.
Okay.
Mrs. Legman, I tend to agree. I wanted to keep the option open.
Absolutely.
Knowing, knowing the impact, and let's not close any options as has been the case, including with the, you know, I, I think the NEMCOG presentation. So I, I concur with Counsel. It, it does make some sense, particularly when it comes to a home rule that is specific and that is supported by the community.
Right. Thanks for filing that, too. That's good that you filed the other.
I agree. Thank, you're welcome.
I, I need help understanding, what does this, what does this look like? So what is the weight limitation then restrict from happening in this case on Ledge Road or in the state case on a residential road near a quarry? What is it preventing?
Sure, what, what?
Is it the same trucks with lighter loads, or is it, is it excluding a certain class of trucks, or?
I, I would say yes, to both of your questions. It, it will restrict by, by gross vehicle weight. As, believe it or not, as a holder of a commercial driver's license, a Class B license, there are requirements for people that drive, to hold a license if you drive a vehicle that exceeds gross vehicle weight of 26,000 pounds. Essentially, you know, you're, you're, you're three axles. So the home, home rule would restrict, and, and these are empty vehicles, by the way. They're not.
The 26,000 pounds is an empty vehicle?
That is correct.
Okay.
So that would be, I, I would suggest that would be the limitation that we place on that road.
And what kind of truck, is that, is that a, a typical truck that hauls a quarry load?
Yeah, three, you said three axle, right?
Yeah. At least.
That's a typical weight limit of, of that type of vehicle.
Some of those trucks coming out of there are more than three axles.
Oh, yeah, that's what I'm saying. Yeah, they're much.
True. Yeah. Yeah, that's a smaller one, is three axle.
Trailers, not just three axle. And again, these are, those are gross vehicle weight based upon empty vehicles. When you, when you fill them up with gravel, typically they're 20, 25,000 pounds more.
So maybe this is a question for Town Counsel. If we restrict gross vehicle weight limit, we're not necessarily precluding them from conducting business, right? I mean, is there, is there a liability? Or is that really on the state if they pass that legislation?
Correct. I mean, if this has to go through approval of the legislature, I don't see how there'd be any liability to the town for adopting that as a home rule action. I, I don't think it would prohibit any trucks from going in and out. It's going to be a vehicle weight, so they could, they could utilize smaller trucks. I don't know if they would be inclined to do so, because the, the number of trips that would be necessary, you know, might not make it economically feasible.
And if they use smaller trucks, that could potentially increase the number of trucks?
It could, theoretically.
If they stayed at the same production level?
Correct. But the question is whether or not they would do that.
Whether they actually do that?
Whether they could, you know, make enough of a return, given the increased expense of, of running that many trips.
Does anyone else?
Yeah, I would think an outside vendor is going to look at it and say, well, I can get a triaxle over to 110 in Chelmsford and get gravel versus, or wherever. I don't know where else it would go, but versus trying to get a, a large F-350 pickup truck into that, they're going to look at it and say, well.
No, it's not worth it.
Yeah, and they're going to drive triaxles where they need to get gravel.
What would? No, go ahead. It's probably already in effect anyway, isn't it? Don't you think that's, is that a law now?
I can't hear you, George.
Is the 26,000 pounds already in effect? Isn't that a state law?
No. I, I mean, I don't know what the limitation is.
Well, I, I would submit, you know, according, according to the state, whether it's 700 CMR or Chapter 85, there are functional classifications of, of roadways, whether it's an arterial, and I had the list here. I haven't memorized these. But there are, there are speed restrictions. There are also weight restrictions for some highways, of course, height restrictions. So I, I mean, I would submit that that roadway was not constructed to handle, A, the volume, nor the weight class of those, those vehicles. Now, I think a question that has to be answered is gravel operations clearly have increased because neighbors have tested, have told me, and they've come to testify, that operations have increased. You know, the permitting process is through the town, and if operations have increased, to me, seemingly or from a zoning perspective, knowing that you're going to expand your operations, that has an impact on traffic and that plan perhaps should have been submitted to the town.
Unfortunately, the permitting was in Westford.
It's through Westford, it's not us.
Right, so we, we didn't have any control over that process.
Representative Elliott, if we were to move forward with the home rule petition approach, is it still your intent to file the general legislation as well?
If a home rule is filed, I would remove that placeholder.
You would? Okay.
I, I think that would, it would send mixed messages. Do you want the statewide? Why do you want it for Chelmsford? And members of the legislature, presumably this is going to go before the Committee on Transportation will ask what, which one is it? But until I get a clarity, get clarity in that, I, I would leave that placeholder in place. Right now, under Article, Rule 12, this doesn't have to go through the rules, because it was filed ahead of the deadline, which is the reason why. And by the way, home rule position is exempt from Rule 12. Rule 12 is, it has to go to the Rules Committee. It's another hurdle that has to be, you have to go through another hurdle in order to get it before a committee, so.
So a home rule petition does have to go through town meeting?
It has to go through town meeting. But, but, and that's sort of my statement or question is, we're a month, we're less than a month away from town meeting. I think, and time is of the essence. So I guess if, at the board's direction, I can work with Counsel. We can draft a warrant article for a special town meeting that we could hold concurrent with the town meeting next month in order to get this to the legislature as soon as possible. I don't think anybody wants to wait another whole season and do this in October. So if that's the direction from the board.
So before we, thank you for that. I was going to ask about the timing. I just want to, for the public, can we just go around and, given, a general, where's everybody's head at? Do we, do you support this or not?
Yes, I support it. I mean, from what I've heard, it sounds like the best pathway to get some immediate, potentially immediate relief in the area, so.
George, are you in support?
Yeah.
Ken, Pat?
Sure.
And I also support it. So, and do you see any reason why not to do it? Paul or Paul?
No, no, I don't see any downside. There's no, yeah, so I, I'll, I'll work with.
Well, let's also get some public input, if there is any. Are you okay if I open it up for public input now?
That's good. Thank you. Is this a solution? I hope it is. Am I going to work, am I going to work to make this, get this through the legislature? Absolutely.
And we appreciate the creativity that you.
I know there's discussion about alternative routes. This is not the only community. If you look at even just the city of Cambridge, just recently, Holliston, there are, the communities across the Commonwealth are, you know, they, they've had it with commercial vehicles cutting through neighborhoods. So we're not alone. I think this will get the attention of, of the legislature by far and, and provide, you know, a, a solution to this, so.
Quick question, with that in mind, have any of your colleagues potentially also filed to eliminate it across the state?
To the best of my knowledge, no.
Is it interesting if they also did that?
However, home rule comes in, I, I have spoken to other members of the delegation, and there is, it's important to get cosponsorship and to, and, and other members to support this, and I fully intend to do that, because there is strength in numbers, not only here, but also with the legislature.
Okay. So for public input, just a reminder.
I do plan on reaching out to Senator Barrett. It's typically a process is a House member will file a bill, and then the Senate, a member of the Senate will do that as well, just to have that balance. And then if it goes to Conference Committee, then there's, it, it's a strategy, I think it's an important strategy. So I'll stop you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. If anyone would like to speak during public input, you can queue up. I just want to remind you to give your name and address, and please constrain your input to this topic, okay? Because that's what's been on the agenda, so. And if anyone in the Zoom room would like to speak for public input, you can either use the raise hand function or turn on your video, and then I'll know you want to speak. Go ahead.
Good evening.
Good evening. Everett Olson, 140 Groton Road. We are right at the intersection of Groton Road, Main Street and Swain Road, so we are right at ground zero. First thing I want to do is thank all of you for the unending amount of work that you have put into this very, very frustrating issue. Representative Elliott, can't thank you enough for now taking our plight to the legislature. As you know, we've lived with noise, we've lived with pollution, disruption to our lives and property values now for over two years. I would ask Representative Elliott, if at some point in time, and in the not-too-distant future, if we could talk about any potential loopholes to the gross vehicle weight and would we want, would we want to include the number of axles? Because as someone previously mentioned, it's basically three axles that are on most of the vehicles that are causing the disruption. They go from anywhere from three axles up to six axles. Anywhere from 10-wheelers to 18-wheelers. 10-wheelers also have what's called a pusher axle in front of the rear two axles. Doesn't have any power going to it, but it's freewheeling so that those trucks can, can bear more weight. So thank you. I thoroughly support the home rule petition and I agree. Limited to Chelmsford because if it, if it goes statewide, then you have a number of trucking businesses that are heavily lobbying legislators that don't have the same time investment and that you have put into this, that Representative Elliott has put into this, and the same degree of problem and disruption to our lives and property values. I would also ask, Madam Chair, through you, if town council could provide a ruling as to whether or not the original grandfathering provision to the operation, operations on Ledge Road still allow a grandfathering permit. It's my contention that when that grandfathering clause was enacted, that scale of operation was far, far less than what it is right now. And that could provide some degree of concern over the legality and the zoning that pertains to that particular area. I would also ask that town council review, I believe it's Chapter 85, which does have some control over the entrance and exit of ways, either public ways or private ways onto a state roadway. And did the town of Westford, and look, I was a 35-year employee, as some of you know, of the town of Westford, so I'm very familiar with the negotiations that took place. Did the town of Westford have the right to require all traffic to turn left onto Route 40 since it is a state road and a way entering and exiting a state road? And it's my feeling that they probably did not have the legal authority to dictate that all traffic turn left onto Route 40. So once again, I thank you for all the work that you've put into it. Please know that all the residents of North Chelmsford appreciate it very much. And Representative Elliott, can't thank you enough for now taking this to the legislature to try and get us some relief.
Thank you. Just repeat your name and address, please.
Sure. Laura Amundson, to Swain Road. My property is listed underneath my maiden name, Laura Rogers. I want to come before everyone, thank you again to the Board of Selectmen. Thank you, Mr. Elliott, State Representative Elliott, for all your hard work. One of the questions that I have is, will this just state Ledge Road? I know that that's the point of origin. But can we also include Swain Road in this documentation? Because if a loophole is found, I, Swain Road directly impacts me and I care about all the surrounding streets, but I want to make sure that Swain Road is part of that in case some other loophole is found and they find another way to skirt down and then go down Swain Road. So that's really just, I want to make sure that I state that. And I am so very thankful that everyone is doing everything possible to move this forward. It's much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening all. Melissa Lauren, I own 44 and 75 Ledge Road. Thank you, Rodney, for your support on this. A few questions that come to mind on this are, you know, one, safety questions just based upon the actions in the last nine months, I would say. There's been some dumping outside of the gate of Ledge Road, of the quarry, where, you know, I've actually called the police to have them come up and filed, filed a complaint against it because, God forbid, there's a fire, right, up there? There's no way to access that, to access, to get to the fire if it's in, up, you know, past the gates of Ledge Road. If that's locked at night and that, and trucks are dumping in front of that gate, you know, there was an emergency three months ago. A truck was leaving and his bed was not all the way down and he got stuck under the overpass and we had to have emergency personnel come up. That being said, you know, there needs to be some communication with, I would say, the quarries to, you know, about locking of that gate. Because if there is ever a fire or something happens up there in the middle of the night and it's locked and people are dumping in front of that, you can't, you can't get up there to actually address the issue. So I think that's the first thing that I wanted to say. To speak about the grandfather clause, when we think about that, has anyone seen any documentation and writing on, you know, what that actually entails? Because as far as I, I am aware, that it was, you know, the grandfather clause was a verbal handshake commitment and there was nothing documented on that. Do we happen to know if there's anything?
Would you like me to address that, Madam Chair? So when we talk about the grandfathering with regard to this, what it means is that there is a roadway that's being used to access commercial property through a residential district. And that roadway is partially public and partially private.
Correct.
So there is a concept in zoning law that you're not allowed to cross over residentially-zoned property to access commercially-zoned property over a private roadway. If it's a public way, it doesn't matter. You can pass and repass, no concerns. But the problem is that the use that's going on there at these multiple different quarries commenced prior to zoning being adopted in Chelmsford. So it's a pre-existing, non-conforming use that has grandfathered status. The question is, to what extent is the use grandfathered? But by, what I mean by that is that are they allowed to have drastically increased the, the rate of usage of this for their ongoing use? And there's case law that would, would support an argument that they're not allowed to have increased it as much as they have. The difficulty, and it's something that, you know, the town has been looking at to try to figure out if there's ways to determine where particular truck traffic is coming from in terms of, you know, which of the multiple users. And then there's also the difficulty in establishing the historical uses. So it's a very complicated question that the town has spent some time and effort looking into, but we're not at resolution for that yet.
Okay. That, that gives a little bit of clarity as to that. And then I guess the only other question I have is, in terms of the restrictions of the roadway, how would we go about measuring that, right? Like what, who would be in, responsible for the measurement? You know, should a truck come up that is, you know, above the requirement? You know, then what happens?
Is the enforcement with the town?
Yeah, it'd be the police department, yeah. They would pull, they would pull somebody over and cite them.
I'm sorry, I may-
Yeah, no, they would be with the police department. They would, they would, if, just like any other unsafe vehicle, they would pull the operator over and then issue them a citation.
And because it's, because it's based on empty gross weight, the police officer just has to cut, count the axles and he's, if they're not supposed to be on the road, they're not supposed to be on the road.
Right.
Okay.
It's not like you have to have a scale and you gotta weigh a truck. You're gonna be able to see the truck and know.
Right. So I would assume that there would be an increased police presence if this went into effect, correct?
Well, there'd be signs too. And, and, you know, the, the truck drivers know that they violate that. They stand to lose too.
Would, would that be something that would then be enforceable by cameras or no?
Unless the legislature allows it. But right now, they don't allow, they don't allow red light cameras in the state. Never mind.
But it's similar, like when you get off the 45 at Route 4, is no truck traffic. And if the police see a truck go down Route 4, North Road, they pull them over and cite them.
Cite them.
Right.
Okay. Well, thank you guys for all your help and, you know, coming up with some resolutions here. Hopefully, we can get to a, you know, a point that we can intact something into our day-to-day.
Thank you.
My name is Mark Workman, 10 Dunshire Drive in North Chelmsford. And I assume we've all seen the mountains of stone just to the west of Route 3 there and where the quarry operates. And I'm wondering if there's any safety issues with that and how would it fit in with the, the home rule with, you know, removing that stone?
Are you talking about that are, the big piles you can see in the current quarry?
Yeah.
That's, that's Westford. That's not us.
That's what?
That's Westford land.
In, in the quarry?
It's Westford land, but some of it might be North Chelmsford. That, that's right on the border, so I don't know.
Yeah, yeah. No, I saw, I was surprised this weekend coming down, the piles were enormous.
We'll make a note of that one. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Hello, my name's Neil Pendleton. I'm here on behalf of my family over on Swain Road. The address is 22 Swain Road. And I came here today after learning about this issue. So thank you, Rodney, for bringing up this issue. I just recently heard about it. This is an issue that I had called the town about after last summer. Obviously, we got frustrated about the increase in truck traffic. But last year, we had a problem with one of the trucks dumping his load all the way from Ledge Road, all the way down Swain Road and having crushed rock fill an entire lane through our whole entire neighborhood. And at that point in time, that was kind of the final straw. Where for me, I wanted to try to take action and call the town and figure out what was going on. And that's when I became aware of this issue. And I guess the agreements that you guys just spoke of and trying to figure out where this kind of came from and how this was allowed to happen and go on through a residential neighborhood. For myself, it's like the house that, that we live in, it's a fourth-generation house in Chelmsford. I have an eight-month-old daughter who I was woken up at 5:00 this morning to trucks driving up and down the road, starting early. And obviously, it isn't even prime season yet. We've had our daughter, she was born in July of last year. She couldn't take naps because of the trucks driving up and down that road and the loud noise, the shaking of inside of the house. So we need a solution. And I really do appreciate, you know, what you've tried to propose because it seems like an easy solution. It's not our problem. It's in another town that this quarry exists. And that other town is putting the problem on us. And they have the easy solution. They can go ahead and open up Commerce Way to allow trucks to, I, some, I'm guessing there's a limit, is what I've heard, I believe, on the amount of trucks that are allowed to use that road. Where if we can come up with a way through restricting the weight of the trucks, well, we don't have to deal with the problem anymore. It's on Westford. That business is in Westford. They can go ahead and open that up. So I really hope that this can go through. I definitely support this. I mean, especially after, you know, just seeing it's like that, you know, I'm here on behalf of my wife as well. She used to grow up playing in our yard. It's like, we don't feel safe, it's like with our daughter, to be able to play in the yard, looking, seeing the neighbors across the street, knowing that, I never got to meet him, but my wife's grandfather, he served as a policeman in Chelmsford. He was a Sergeant McAllister. And just to know, it's like that he wouldn't have envisioned where he lived and where he chose to live after retiring from the Navy in Chelmsford, he, he wouldn't have wanted to see it get to the point where it is. So I'm just really hoping that something can be done. Anything that you guys can do, I really appreciate. I would know that all my neighbors and stuff, you know, have complained about the noise. So I just really hope, you know, again, that, that something can come of this because I never saw it coming to this. I mean, when my wife and I started dating back, you know, probably in 2018, and I was able to sit out on the deck at night. And, you know, it's like we could have peaceful afternoon dinners. Next day, I could come home from lunch, meet up with her. And we didn't have trucks like this. I mean, I can't get out of my truck when I come home from, from being at work during the daytime and not get out having a phone conversation because of just the noise. It's like from the trucks driving by. I have counted 30 to 40 trucks in a row without one passenger vehicle going by. And it's a commercial road now and it shouldn't be that way. So, yeah, I was gonna make, make one other point that escapes me right now. But I just really hope, you know, that there's something that can be done. Oh, I remember what it was when you brought up the, the weight limits. So one of my concerns is with the 26,000 pounds. When I just did a quick Google search after you said that, it looks like the classification of trucks that we needed to submit to being weighed, like on highways, is about 10,000 pounds. So I just want to make sure we also get that right, that we have the right weight limit and, and right restriction if we do move forward with this. Because it looks like what we're talking about, I mentioned, you guys mentioned F-350s. I believe that's under a 10,000-pound weight truck. I mean, I know it's like, I, I drive, it's like, I drive a Tundra. And so that falls within, I think it's like 6,500 pounds or less within that range. And again, I could be completely wrong in this stuff, but I just want to have us look up the weight limits to make sure that we're not, we're not setting the bar too high to still allow a lot of dump trucks to be coming through there that could have otherwise been shut down when we put this through. So, thank you and I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is, my name is Michelle DeVall Callahan. I live at 194 Groton Road. I did have one other concern that I believe would affect the residents in that area specifically. I live across from Scotty Hollow, so I get a lot of the trucks right from Westford on their way over to Swain and Ledge. And one of my concerns is the use of the J-brake that some of these trucks employ. And to put it in context, I echo what the gentleman said before. I have two young children as well, who, we had to move on my, one of my son's bedrooms because he would, literally could not sleep with the amount of noise. But the noise from the J-brake is so loud that it literally shakes my home. You know, I understand I live on a busy section of the road and there's going to be commercial traffic where I am. But not only are these trucks driving incredibly fast, but this use of this brake is thunderous. And I'm not exaggerating when I tell you I've had things shake and fall off of tables or walls at times because it is so loud. So when we're looking to solve this problem, I hope that is taken into consideration as well. It's not just a weight issue, it's also how these trucks are being driven.
Thank you. Representative Elliott, I defer to you, Paul, but I think we would have to toss that one back to the state because when we've looked into it before, it's, it's a state law that we cannot preclude the use of J-brakes. It's federal?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the problem with the J-brake restriction is your-
It's a, they say it's a safety thing. You can't preclude the use of it.
You can get sued from it if you limit it. But, and I would assume too, that if this goes through and you get a limit on 25,000, by the way, my F-250 is 10,000 empty. So I think your, your numbers are probably right on the 25,000.
Yeah, no, I think, Mr. Pendleton, we need to just ensure that we're getting the gross vehicle weight.
Yeah. I think that probably-
And we can work through that when, before this goes to town meeting.
I, I think if you get the gross vehicle weight under 26,000, I don't think you're gonna run into vehicles that actually even have the J-brake.
Right. That's what I was thinking. If you get a restriction on that road and then the volume of trucks goes down, the J-
Of course, that doesn't mean that there won't be some that are coming off, you know, out of Westford.
So what, and I wanted to just kind of go back to that point before I forget about it. Someone brought up the, the left turn out of Commerce Way. And I know that we've looked into this in the past because the state road is only defined as a state road around the interchange. And that portion of Route 40 is technically a Westford town road. So they have the authority to do that. However, my concern, you know, someone brought up the comment, "Okay, well, if, if we restrict now on Ledge Road and Westford's gotta go figure it out." And they start, they, they give, let's say they give dispensation to modify the permit conditions so the land can be modified within those Westford businesses. And they can then start sending the quarry trucks out Commerce Way. Is there something that we can preemptively do on our town-owned part of Groton Road to restrict them from sending all those quarry trucks left into Chelmsford? Because we know that they don't turn left and go on the highway. They turn left and they, they travel down through other streets in Chelmsford to go to Lowell or turn back around and go back into Westford. So like, is there something that we have to preemptively start thinking about for that portion of Groton Road? Because otherwise, like the, the woman who just spoke, she's gonna have a problem worse than she has today because now, now all the quarry trucks might be coming out that way.
I, I'm not sure to what extent-
So is there a strategy that we can employ for the town-owned portion of Groton Road?
The numbered state route.
What'd you say, Paul? What'd you say, Paul?
That's a numbered state route.
Right.
Yeah, but every time we look into this, we're told the state only will take responsibility for what's around the interchange.
But you've got a numbered state road that's off of a state highway of Route 3. And, you know, the question is, how could you effectively regulate it? That's what I'm wondering.
What we're asking is...
It's a DOT road.
Coming through town.
Just play devil's advocate here. Let's say they start dumping trucks out. And then, once you pass the underpass of Route 3, and you're heading down Route 40, once you get far enough away, could you then put a weight limit like we do on North Road?
And then the question would be, what's the alternate route?
Get on Route 3.
Okay. And then, as we know from Golden Cove Road, what's an alternate route that the state would approve as a truck exclusion? Because we could not put the truck exclusion on Golden Cove Road here because they wouldn't accept Route 3 as the alternate route.
But all I'm saying is, if Westford can say no left turn...
Yep.
Because it's a town road there, well, Groton Road is a town road up until you get to that interchange, and it's a town road on the other side of it. So why can't Chelmsford try to think a little strategically about that?
Could you put a weight restriction coming into the village?
Again, you can do a truck exclusion, but what's the alternate route?
Get on Route 3 or go into Westford.
But that would require the state to approve the alternate route.
I think the idea is just to look at it.
No, I understand. I'm saying, well, look at it.
Let's not defeat it before we look at it.
Because when we were looking at left turns out of Ledge...
I'm just saying, based on our experience of what happened with Golden Cove Road, that wasn't possible.
Right. When we were looking at left turns out of Ledge, we were concerned, we had to notify Tingsborough, as I recall.
Because it's a connecting road to another town.
Right. And if all of a sudden, some change in the quarries based on what we're talking about today would cause them to open up and have more truck traffic coming into Chelmsford, wouldn't in fact, they have to notify us? And how would we deal with that?
They didn't notify us the last time.
Well, I don't know what happened the last time. All I know is this time. And we need to be smarter about it this time. The one distinction I would make is that this condition was part of a permitting process, a special permit that was issued by the Westford Zoning Board of Appeals. It's not an action that was taken at the Select Board level by the town of Westford. So, I mean, I do think, you know, that is an important distinction. Again, you know, whenever I go to Walgreens on 110, I can only go right out of that parking lot. That was a restriction that was included in a special permit decision issued by the Chelmsford Planning Board. You do have the authority to include that sort of a permitting condition. And that doesn't necessarily run afoul of the requirements with regards to, you know, traffic on a state road. Whereas if you're actually putting restrictions on the roadway itself, then you run afoul of those.
I think the company agreed to that. That was the only way they were gonna get the permit, was to agree not to make it.
Can we take an action to at least start looking and thinking a little bit fresher, take a fresh look at it preemptively before we wind up with a problem that's worse than the one we have now?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, like, do you want your perspective around from the village side looking out? Would there be a way that we could look at it and say, we don't want all these large trucks coming into the village? So were you going to find something to sort of combat that if that happens? Or even if we just say, from today going forward, we don't, what the volumes are today is fine, but we don't want them to increase, understanding we might...
You can't do that on public ways.
Okay.
Madam Chair, let me suggest to you, to the manager, that we convene a meeting with DOT to hear it from the horse's mouth on what's permissible, what's not permissible.
Thank you.
And come back to the board, the manager can come back to the board, excuse me, with that information.
Is there anything, any other public comment before I close? Oh, right behind you, Rodney.
Hi, Sue Olson, 140 Groton Road, Virginia. Thank you very much for the suggestion on the stopping the trucks from coming down Groton Road past the town. Paul, you need to educate yourself maybe a little bit on state roads. You have always said that Route 40 is a state road, to a point. It is not.
I said it was a numbered route, a state numbered route. Route 40 is state numbered, named and numbered by the state.
But it's not under the control of the state as far as from the Westford line down. I've looked into it many times.
I'm not arguing with you. I'm saying it's a state numbered route.
Okay. You've made comments also about we can't stop commerce. It's about time that the residents of North Chelmsford get some kind of relief. I know things have been tried, things have been done. We've got speed bumps, we've got calming measures and whatnot. But some of this stuff that's being proposed and spoken about is so out there that, I mean, I just, let's get things under control here and take one step at a time. And if Representative Elliott has proposed something, we need to look into that to its fullest extent. And hopefully, we can get it on a town meeting warrant. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public input?
Hi, Lori Woods, I'm at 4 Esther Drive in North Chelmsford. I commend all of you for taking the time and the energy, and thank you. I'd like to state safety issues on Ledge Road. Ledge Road is a dead end at the quarries. If something happens to a truck, or a car, or a bus, there's no other way out of Ledge Road. If something happens on Swain Road, Route 40, Main Street, Dunstable Road, there is another way in or out for emergency vehicles. There isn't on Ledge Road. There's one route in, and that's it. Unless you have the trucks go into Westford where they're loading up and unloading and use Westford's access. It's really unfair and unsafe to the people that live on Ledge Road. The potholes are dangerous. People have wrecked their tires. The lawns are dug up from the big trucks. The water has now drained into people's driveways and front lawns. It doesn't look like a neighborhood anymore. And it used to. It's not like we all moved there and there was a lot of heavy truck traffic. The heavy truck traffic has imposed onto Ledge Road as a backway in and out. We need to address this as a Westford problem. The trucks need to go through Westford. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public input?
I am John Kelly, 38 Dunshire Drive. And I want to thank you all for listening to this over and over again, Mr. Elliott. I've got pictures here of the extensive damage that occurs on Swain Road. And Ledge Road is gonna come along and is way worse. If you look at the piles that they built earlier, when you get on the on-ramp for Route 40, onto Route 3, headed north, if you look across the highway, the piles there are grown immensely by the week. That only means they intended to do more and more and more, which is only gonna make it worse and worse and worse. To the point that the lady just made, the safety, you could probably put a fire truck on that street at 5:00 in the morning, when the trucks are backed up. And that fire chief could say, you know what? I can't get a vehicle down here if there's an emergency. And he could do something right away to stop this. The problem is Ledge Road, and Westford has to accept the responsibility. And there's gotta be some way to make it. And as far as the tickets on the weight, you can just, the scales themselves have a weight limit. They issue a ticket to every driver. You could just go to the weigh station and get the weights of all the trucks that are going in and out. If they have anything over your gross vehicle weight requirement, you can ticket them under what you see. But safety is a major issue. And I think if you've got something to fight upon and concern, saying, I can't get a fire truck down there? How can you get around it?
Thank you.
Joe Tierney, 3 Grant Street. I come here as the Chair of the Vinyl Square Strategic Action Plan Committee. And I just want to thank everybody here in this room, for the residents, my neighbors. And I just wanted to let you know that we have this on our agenda as a concern that we have, that we watch over, you know, anything that's a development in the north part of the town. And I don't know if it's still feasible, but it's been out there. If any of the residents want to join as a way to join our meetings, potentially do a subcommittee or whatnot, if that's allowed. I just want to put that out there to, because some good ideas or some things to keep the ideas fresh and constant. If you wanted to have that arm and extension, we work with the folks in this room, DPW, and Paul, and other people, that we just try to look out for other things to make sure. And we'll have the project in Vinyl Square that is gonna be a long project. But then, you know, the trucks that go down that area won't be able to take certain turns as well. So I think some of the things that came up here, that we need to think about the impact of this for all things that, I think if we put our heads together, we can continue to communicate with the folks on what could be done, what's potential, and have more eyes on some solutions. So I just want to put that out there as a representative of the committee, that we're here and we support you, and we hope for the best. And again, thank you, Rodney, for putting this forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any more public input on the proposed legislation in the home rule petition? Okay. If not, Representative Elliott, is there any wrap-up that you have? Or you have what you need to...
Sure, let's wrap this up.
And I want to thank you again, as everyone else has, for your creativity and work with House Counsel on this.
You're very welcome, Madam Chair, and members of the board. Thank you. Thank you for having me here tonight again, and to the residents of Swain Road, Ledge Road, and all the surrounding areas, Groton. You know, I conduct myself as an elected official, just like your representatives in town here. Would I like this on my road? And the answer is no. And we're gonna fight tooth and nail, in my opinion, to pass this legislation to restrict access. You know, the non-conforming use of this and grandfathered, you know, to me, there perhaps should have been an MOU with the town of Chelmsford because clearly, the operations of that gravel pit would not exist, certainly would not be extended without access and egress to via Ledge Road and others. So I do feel there's opportunity here with this home rule petition. Given the requirement vis-à-vis the Zoning Board of Appeals to limit and restrict the number of vehicles on the town road through Chelmsford, to me, that doesn't mean they can go through Westford, excuse me. That doesn't mean that the alternative is going through Chelmsford. So we'll work to pass this. I'll look forward to town meeting, and we'll have some more answers on preempting other problems that could surface. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. So there's two actions I took from this. One is Paul, and Paul, you're gonna...
There's a hand raised on the Zoom.
Oh, I'm sorry. We have someone in the Zoom room who would like to speak?
Yes, hi. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we need your name and address, please.
Yes, this is Alana Pope, 36 Ledge Road. And I apologize, it just broke up when Representative Elliott was speaking. So I missed that last message. But I just wanted to state on record two safety concerns that I have. Not directly with the legislation that is being spoken about, but just to share concerns that other residents have gotten up and spoke about tonight. One being on just reiterating the safety concern. I have two small children, a five-month-old and a three-year-old. And this being a one-way street, it terrifies me if either of my children were in danger and one of the trucks were stopped on the road, broken down. The inability for an emergency vehicle to come and help take care of my children or for me to get them to a hospital if needed. It is definitely scary, just that they are, they would block any emergency vehicle or any resident from exiting in the case of an emergency. The second case is for air quality. I know that the EPA was brought up earlier. Just a minor note, but just to speak to the volume of the dust in the air and the breathing of the air. Again, having two small children living directly on Ledge Road, this is a genuine concern of mine. Just to use it as an example, the air filter in my car, I know that they're supposed to last a long time. I have to get mine replaced with less than a year. They typically last over three. I work from home full-time, so I do not travel. My car is in my driveway on Ledge Road, and my vehicle air filter gets black soot. They show me pictures every time they change it. That is just what the residents of Ledge Road are breathing in on a daily basis. I just wanted to state those two concerns. And I wanted to commend again the board members and Representative Elliott. We genuinely appreciate you going to bat for us and helping take care of us, the residents. It's, we just appreciate it. So thank you.
Thank you. So Paul, actually, I guess relative to the trucks, there's three things I noted. One is you, Paul and Paul, you are gonna work with Representative Elliott on the home rule petition and the special town meeting warrant. And then, when we can take a breather from that, or if it makes sense in parallel to think about, proactively about the Groton Road contingency? And how do we preclude the potential of a worse problem on Groton Road once this goes through? And then, Paul, I don't know if you want to just take offline with your staff and look at the issue of emergency vehicle access? I'm not sure what can be done there, but I think that's more within the town operations. Anybody else? And I know Representative Elliott, you're also trying to work with the DEP on the air quality piece. So thank you for that. Okay. If there's nothing else, I'm gonna move on to the next topic. If you're leaving the room from this topic, I'm just gonna ask that you save your conversation for when you get outside, so we can keep going here. Thank you very much for your participation. Okay, next up, we have Paul Haverdy. You want to introduce this one?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Town Council Paul Haverdy is here to speak about a recent Massachusetts Supreme Court judicial ruling that occurred in the town of Southborough that came out about a month ago now, I think, pertaining to free speech rights of citizens at public meetings. With that, I'll turn it over to Council Haverdy.
Thank you. Madam Chair, the case from the SJC is Barron versus Colenda. And it's a very significant free speech case that the board needs to be aware of because it could have some significant negative repercussions if the board were to take action inconsistent with this. So with this matter, the plaintiff appeared before the town of Southborough Select Board during its public comment session, which is, you know, obviously something... Hold on.
It is...
Sorry, I didn't know it was shut already.
So this situation resulted from an altercation, I guess you could call it, that occurred during public comment session of the Southborough Select Board. The plaintiff got up during the regularly scheduled designated public comment session after waiting, you know, two and a half hours through other parts of the meeting, and then got up and started berating the Select Board for prior open meeting law violations, which according to the SJC decision, there were, there had been dozens of prior violations. So it seems like a fairly legitimate criticism. However, the Chair of the Select Board informed this resident that she was essentially slandering the Select Board and that she was in violation of the town's public comment policy and that she would be taken out of the meeting by force if necessary, if she didn't assist. She continued to criticize. She called the Select Board Chair a Hitler. And it sort of went downhill from there. So the Chair went into recess, took his microphone off because this was recorded, you know, for their local cable, but then began yelling at the plaintiff and telling her that she was disgusting. And again, told her that he would have her escorted out if she didn't leave. So this person, you know, feeling that, you know, they were at risk of being arrested, left, but went and contacted an attorney and filed a lawsuit against the Select Board. And one of the main points of the lawsuit was challenging the Select Board's public comment policy. And I'm just gonna read from the policy, which required... And I'm just going to read from the policy, which required, "All remarks and dialogue in public meetings must be respectful and courteous, free of rude, personal, or slanderous remarks. Inappropriate language and/or shouting will not be tolerated. Furthermore, no person may offer comment without permission of the chair, and all persons shall, at the request of the chair, be silent. No person shall disrupt the proceedings of a meeting." So the Supreme Judicial Court reviewed the text of Article 19 of the State Constitution, which states, "The people have a right in an orderly and peaceable manner to assemble to consult upon the common good, give instruction to their representatives, and to request of the legislative body by way of addresses, petitions, or remonstrances, redress of the wrongs done them, and of the grievances they suffer." SJC noted that this provision envisions a politically active and engaged, even aggrieved and angry populace. And in fact, they, you know, they do a good job of sort of sorting out the history of Article 19, pointing out that it was originally drafted between John Adams and Samuel Adams. It looked at the revolutionary period and how, you know, the discourse at that point in time, you know, could be actually very heated, and basically said that, you know, this is something that is expected in the public comment process, and that there's a lot of leeway that's given to it. It did note that there are reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions are allowed. However, these restrictions must be narrowly tailored to serve a significant governmental interest, and that they leave open ample alternative channels for communication of information. It noted that the provision of the Southborough Code requiring peaceable and orderly communication is not the same as respectful and courteous. So the fact that you're allowed to have limitations on how information is presented, the timing on when it can be presented, does not mean that you can require it to be respectful and courteous. It also looked at the content, and that was one of the big issues that they had, was because essentially the content would have allowed, you know, flowery, positive comments of Select Board actions, and prevent any negative comments. And they said that that is not viewpoint neutral, and therefore that is a violation of their free speech rights. Again, they did make sure to note that reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions are allowed, including designating when and where a public comment session may occur, how long it might last, the time limits for each person speaking during the public comment session, and the rules preventing speakers from disrupting others and removing those who do. So you still have, and you've always had the right, you know, to control the timing of when somebody speaks, and that includes the length of comment, whether or not you allow public comment at all, and if somebody is being disruptive and preventing others from speaking, you would still have the right to remove them. But what you can't do is tell somebody that they're not allowed to stand up and criticize the board, even with strong language. The SJC looked at, you know, the question of fighting language, right, and noted that there is a very narrow exception in free speech law addressing what is known as fighting language. However, they also said that their expectation would be that elected officials would be able to handle, you know, strong criticism and even harsh language without resorting to fighting. So the standard is going to be higher as an elected official than it's going to be for an average person. So one question that has come up on the Mass Municipal Lawyers Association listserv since this decision came out is whether or not this case would be applicable to town meeting. As you know, we have some very specific rules in our town meeting process that limits the ability to criticize previous speakers, address them by name, requires, you know, civil discourse. The consensus appears to be that because that's a legislative process, rather than an open public comment process, that you would still be allowed to require that. I'm not completely convinced of that. I think that care should be taken to make sure that we are not preventing people from being able to criticize. But that being said, again, we still, and the moderator during town meeting, would still have the right to control the comments during the meeting, limit the amount of time that somebody has to speak, and make sure that they're staying on topic and not discussing, you know, articles or issues that are not part of the warrant article that's under So that's really all I had on this. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Have you conveyed this to the clerk and moderator?
I have had conversations with the moderator. I have not had any conversation with the clerk.
I'm not sure if you need to, but specifically town meeting.
Yep.
Okay.
Well, to follow up on that, should there be something formally given to all the boards and committees? Because I know there's at least one other board that tends to shut people down if they start getting critical of people, and, I mean, I don't think this is just for the Select Board.
That's correct. It's applicable to any board. And so one thing I wanted to point out as well is the chair of the Select Board in this case was sued personally, and they claimed sovereign immunity, essentially, and that was rejected by the SJC, because they said that they should have been aware through the years and years of free speech decisions, that stopping somebody from criticizing you as a public official is not allowed and is a violation of their free speech rights. So I think that it's something we should convey to every board, because we want to make sure that nobody stumbles into a situation where they run into a claim, you know, where they're being sued personally, and they're not protected.
Would it make sense for you to write, like, a one-page memo citing this, and it just, you know, the town can distribute it to every board and committee?
Makes sense that he visits the boards that have open...
I can't hear you.
Would it make sense that he visits the boards that have open...
I think I'm already on the agenda for the next planning board meeting to discuss open meeting issues.
Just the open meeting one, I mean, it might be like Planning Board, School Committee, and...
Conservation Commission.
Conservation.
I'm not counsel for the school committee.
Right.
Oh, okay, but, all right.
Conservation Commission, I certainly can, Board of Appeals, I certainly can. They don't have a public comment, period.
Well, and Dr. Lang's in the Zoom room, so if he wants to bring that to the school committee, he can do that.
I guess, wouldn't it also apply to a public hearing?
Right, any public hearing.
So it's not just public comments, because one of the suggestions was, well, boards may just drop public comment from their agenda to avoid this issue, but I think, and I'm asking you, Paul, I think it would also apply to public hearing, because under public hearing, the public has a right to speak.
It absolutely would, yes.
And then if you go back to town meeting, town meeting takes comments from the public, not just from the legislative body.
Correct. And again, you know, the chair in a board meeting, the moderator at town meeting absolutely has the right to prevent somebody from talking about something that's off-topic, right? They still have control over the meeting, but what they can't do is prevent somebody from criticizing, even if it goes beyond the boundary of good taste. And there's even discussion about, you know, the issue of potential slander, and you can't really even stop that.
Doesn't it seem like something more suitable for policy than just a memo?
I do think it's suitable for policy, and I did look at the Select Board policies, and there's nothing in there that would contradict this decision, so that's a good thing, that nothing has to be changed. But adopting a policy that expressly states, you know, what's allowed and what's not, you know, pursuant to this decision is probably a good idea.
Because some things that we've seen, because later on in our agenda, we solicited information from some of the other boards and committees, you know, and what they need. And I know one of the things they said was, as far as training or guidance for new members in coming on and thinking about this right out of the gate, you know, that they would want to know, you know, how proper, how to properly conduct themselves during a meeting, so.
So could we start with, like, at least a memo to everybody to get the word out, and then we can work with you on development of a policy?
Sure.
And would that be a, that would be a policy that the Select Board develops that may go in the Select Board policy document, but you envision that we would flow it out?
Yeah, I think so.
Just like the minutes?
And ultimately, it's the chair of each board that would be responsible for, because they're the ones that control any discussion as part of their meetings.
Okay.
And we have a chairless, right?
Plus, yeah, plus you also have other elected boards that we don't have policy jurisdiction over, like Library Trustees, Planning Board, Board of Health. Right. That we don't, the board doesn't...
So we should at least communicate it to them.
Exactly.
Anything else?
So I just noticed, and this has nothing to do with the decision or anything, that a case from Chelmsford was cited.
Yes.
I thought that was interesting.
Glad that's buried in the past.
Yes.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Yep. Paul Cohen?
Yeah. Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Jay Lang, our superintendent of schools, is on the Zoom this evening, and he's here to request a vote to authorize him as superintendent to submit a statement of interest to the Massachusetts School Building Authority for the Parker Middle School, and this follows similar action that was approved by the school committee last week. Good evening, Jay.
Hi, good evening, Paul, and good evening, Select Board members. It's my annual visit to the Select Board meeting on this particular topic, but the school committee voted last week to advance another project for consideration to the Massachusetts School Building Authority. It is the same project we had submitted last year for a look at the Parker Middle School as a potential middle school project in town. And we actually received very good feedback on our application last year. The MSBA ended up actually approving a number of less projects, just because of some of the cost overruns with some of the bidding that's been taking place right now. I think they're being a little bit conservative on who they invited into the process. I think our application was actually very highly rated, and in a normal year, hopefully would have been able to be invited in, but unfortunately, last year it wasn't. So we ended up tweaking our application slightly with some of the language, but we would like to submit again before the closing period in early April this year for consideration of a potential middle school project. If we do submit in April, again, the school committee did vote at their meeting last week to authorize me to do this, we're seeking that from you this evening. I did lay out the form of the vote that needs to be taken and recorded. We would then submit in April, and then likely, because the MSBA already came out to do this site visit last year, they wouldn't need to do that again, so we would basically wait to see if this school was going to advance or not, and we would learn around the holidays next fall. But happy to answer any questions you have. The application, again, should look familiar. It's the same application primarily we submitted last year, and would just seek your approval to be able to do that again this year.
Any questions or comments? If not, would you like to read the motion?
I will make a motion. It's once a year I get to do this. I appreciate it, Jay, this is good. I'll make a motion that we vote to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the Statement of Interest Form dated March 21, 2023, for the Parker Middle School located at 75 Granitville Road, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and property categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Priority two, elimination of existing sphere overcrowding. Priority four, prevention of sphere overcrowding expected to result from increased enrollments. Priority five, replacement, renovation, or modernization of school facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating, ventilation systems to increase energy conservation, decrease energy-related costs to a school facility. And priority seven, replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs, consistent state, and approved local requirements, and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the Statement of Interest Form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees acceptance or approval of the application, the awarding of a grant or any other funding commitment from Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the town to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five-zero. Thank you, Dr. Lang, good luck.
Thank you very much for your vote, and we'll forward any information we receive along the way. Have a good night.
Yep.
Have a good night.
Next, we have Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee members Sean McGuigan and Badre Yupili. And this is, they're here, what brings them here tonight is the town's electricity aggregation supply contract expires this November, and therefore we need to initiate a procurement process for a subsequent contract. With that in mind, you know, Christopher Haley, our Sustainability Director, attended the meeting at my request of the committee to discuss the amount of renewable energy to be included in the default electricity supply for the procurement of this aggregation supply program for the upcoming period. So he has a presentation, which is in your packet, and then we'll hear that and then have some discussion.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Sean McGuigan, and I'm a member of the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee. I'd like to speak to you tonight about the current Chelmsford Choice Energy Aggregation Program, how the rates have looked over the last couple of years, and where we think they're going in the future. Before discussing the Chelmsford Choice Program, I just wanted to spend a minute to emphasize how important clean energy is to meeting our town goal of net-zero greenhouse gas emissions by 2050. There's going to be, continue to be, a push for electrification. Folks will be buying electric vehicles, purchasing heat pumps for their homes, and so as we move from a carbon-based system to an electric-based system, it's important for our energy that we purchase to be as clean as possible. Next slide, please. So I just wanted to remind everybody what the Chelmsford Choice Program looks like right now. There are three tiers of the program. One is basic, one is greener, and one we call greenest. Right now, the default option is the basic, so that's a 22% renewable energy content in that option. We have a greener option, which is you can up, purchase, pay a little bit more for your electricity, and that's a greener option, 62%. And then we have the greenest option, which is you're basically using 100% green energy. So the rates are from just over 10 cents in the basic program to just over 13 cents in the greenest option. And again, that's our current program. I just wanted to point out also that these rates are only on the supply portion of the bill, so even though you're paying 3 cents more to opt up into the greenest program, it doesn't flow into your distribution, your distribution costs as well. So you're not really looking at a 30% increase in your electricity bill. When you consider the delivery portion, it's really about a 12% difference between the basic and the greenest. Next slide, please. So as town manager mentioned, we have some indicative pricing on where we think the program will be over the next three years. The basic supply, so we're going to be able to increase gradually in the next three years up to 27% renewable, and the indicative pricing for that is about 13.8 cents. Greener, we've received pricing on three different options. We're probably going to recommend the 50% renewable option, and so that price is 15.8 cents per kilowatt hour. And then the greenest, again, it's 100% renewable program. The cost for that program indicates at around 16.8 cents per kilowatt hour. And at the bottom of the slide, I just have some information on what basic supply rates are looking for. I think everybody in town realizes that electricity prices have really gone up in terms of the basic supply. So they were about 34 cents this past winter, and then I believe some proposed rates for the spring and the summer are about 14 cents.
That's been approved at this point by the state.
Has it? Thank you. So again, our rates, I think, are pretty comparable to what we've seen and what we may see, or we are going to see, going forward. Next slide. So here, I just put together a chart that just shows our current program, where we think the program is going in the future, and I just threw a couple of towns, local towns, in here, just so you can see that our rates do compare favorably with other towns, the town of Acton, the city of Worcester. So I think we've done some negotiation. I think our rates are very competitive. Next slide. So we have three options to really discuss with you today, and the first is if we consider that the basic choice will be the default. So when somebody enters the program, they will default into the basic rate, and so that's option number one that we're going to speak to you today. So it's the cheapest option. It also is the least green option. As I mentioned, the amount of green power will increase in that option to 27% in 2025. We still have the option, and we would encourage folks to opt into either the greener or the greenest program. greenest program, if they were able to do so. And I do want to just thank everybody that has, have already opted into the greener and the greenest program. Next slide, please. Option number two, so this would be if we use the greener option as our default. So, everyone who enters the program will default into the greener program. This really raises the floor on green energy use in Chelmsford. It sets kind of the floor at this 50% level. Again, folks have the option to either opt down into the basic program, or opt up into the greenest program. And what we would do is we would recommend that a lot of community education go into this selection, so that townspeople know that they have the option to opt down or to opt up. Most people would probably remain in the default program, so we feel that most people will end up in this greener program. So, again, educating the community is really important. Next slide is our option number three, and that would be if the default was the greenest option. So, everybody would be placed into the 100% renewable green option. At this point, our committee is not recommending that this course of action be taken. I think we're recommending that we take it a little bit slower, and again, if you do choose this option, again, community education, letting folks know that they have the option to opt down at any time, is important. Next slide, please. So, this slide is a little bit busy, but what I was trying to do was evaluate where the rates were in February 2021, where they were in February 2023, and where they might be going forward as this Chelmsford Choice Program gets enrolled. And what I was trying to do here was just in the top part of the slide, I'm just comparing and contrasting the four different rates. The green option, the basic option, the greenest option, and then basic supply option. And by doing that, I think I'm able to show that, one, the rates are very competitive, the rates we have for Chelmsford Choice are competitive. Basic supply has kind of gone up and gone down in certain periods the last three years, and our Chelmsford Choice Program is just a flat supply rate. So, it's a little bit easier for folks to budget, they know what their electricity is going to be. In the middle of the slide, I just take a look at our delivery charges here in Chelmsford. As we know, electricity is, our bill is split into supply and in demand, delivery. And so, over the last two years, our delivery charges have gone up about 2 cents per kilowatt hour. So, if folks that are in the Chelmsford Choice Program are seeing their electricity bills go up, that's primarily because delivery charges are going up. The Chelmsford Choice supply rate has stayed steady. And then in the bottom of the slide, what I tried to do was I looked at myself, I averaged my electricity use over a year, I came out to about 616 kilowatt hours per month, on average. I have a relatively older house, I don't have air conditioning, but I do have a plug-in hybrid vehicle that I charge often at home, so I felt I was maybe a good test case to, just to provide a comparison. So, what I found was when I looked back at my rates in 2021, my bills, just last month in February 2023, and then estimating how it's going to look going forward, I was able to find that moving from the basic option to the greener option is really about $10, $12 a month extra, based on, again, my average kilowatt usage of about 616 kilowatt hours per month. And then for me to opt up into the greenest option is about $20 extra a month. So, when you look at it that way, it kind of shows you economically what you might be seeing on your bills, depending on the different options. Next slide, please. What I tried to show on this slide was just, again, how I mentioned the red line is the Chelmsford Choice basic, the yellow line is the greener, and then I think it's a black line on our screen, it's, that's the greenest option, and then the light blue is basic supply rates. And so, I just wanted to show that even our greenest option compares very favorably to what the supply, basic supply rates have been. You'll see that, especially in the last six months, those rates have really gone up. So, that's what I wanted to show on that slide. Thank you. Next slide. And I've spent a lot of my time this evening really talking about the economic portion, but I just wanted to spend a little bit of time looking at the environmental benefits as well. So, every person that joins the greener option, that will result in over a ton of greenhouse gases avoided over a year. And then if you choose the greenest option, that's about 2 and 1/2 tons of greenhouse gases avoided per person, or per residence in Chelmsford. So, the more people that opt into the greener and the greenest options really drive our environmental improvement as we continue moving towards net zero in town. I think with that, my presentation's complete, and Badri and I will be here to take questions.
I'll also make a few comments additional to this. From our draft report back in October, we computed out that residential electricity usage is about 5 to 6% of the overall footprint, essentially, and including commercial.
Can you just move the microphone up for me?
The residential footprint of electricity consumption leads to about 5 to 6% of the total greenhouse gas emissions of Chelmsford as a total, just residents. If you include commercial and small businesses, that number is about in the 10, 12, 15, 15, some 10 to 15% range. So, this is a big and a quick lever to use to try and move the goalpost, or where we want to be, forward as fast as we can. Another point, I wanted to give some more context and additional data, just if you hear Sean's comment about the distribution rates, or delivery rates going up by 2 cents. I looked at National Grid's website on the service rates history, they have doubled in the last seven to eight years, give or take, from about 2015 March to 2023 March, seven, eight years have almost doubled. So, that's about a rate of about, give or take, 9% year-on-year growth on just the delivery portion that's happening. So, I just want you to keep in mind that statistical model, that that portion is not going to come down anytime soon, because actually, it's got to maintain the supply and improve the grid infrastructure, so to speak. The other point I wanted to highlight, just for context-wise, for about the same cost increase over the base rate, right, for where we were at prior, this current contract that ends in November, for about a cent and a half, we were getting, give or take, up to 62% of green electricity numbers. But going forward, that cent and a half, give or take, is only giving us about 30% or 25% more. So, that number has become, coming down, because more and more communities are increasing their green capacity requirements, the baseline's increasing, there's only so much capacity going in at this point. But in respect, I wanted to give you some other macro trends as we go along. This information is important for anybody who's listening or wants to analyze and understand it, this is useful for them to have. But our recommendation, as stands, is to choose the default option in the middle ground, and keep the options open and really drive forward, because this really gets us to about, rough order of math, just the residential, we can move the needle by about 2 to 3% of the total greenhouse gas emissions. Still a long way away from where we want to be, but if I think, if I'm not mistaken, this program is also applicable to the commercial and small businesses or industrial rates also at this point, and therefore, they too benefit quite a bit, and really bring the overall goal in the 5 to 7% range, which is a significant move going forward. Our hope is that over the next iteration, which is the 2025 or 2026 to 2032 range, we can move closer to the 100% mark, hopefully with more solar rooftops or other solar farms that may come up in the region to support more of the increasing demand for green electricity that may be happening. So, just FIA. Open to questions, comments, suggestions?
Just to comment, Badri and Sean have done what they're supposed to do as a Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee, and I thank them and appreciate their work. What I want to point out to the board is, what's going to happen is with the new contract is even the basic cost is going to go up, and they did point that out in their analysis. In other words, next, going into next winter, people's electricity supply cost is going to increase, perhaps up to $150 or so a month, depending, you know, if you look at that chart, that busy chart, you know, from 278 to 425 a month. What they're suggesting is going, now moving that default from the basic, you know, which as they noted is increasing by the state, to the more greener project, that's now probably going to cost them, I think they said another 10.
Percent to 12%.
Yeah, another 10 to 12, 12, so now you're talking another $144 a month. I mean, you're, now you're talking neighborhood, perhaps of what, $300 per year that people are going to have, you know, and that's across the community, you know. What we've seen, and we've educated people, and they've helped promote the choice between the default versus the greener options, is very few select anything other than the default. It's either because we don't reach them, or the, you know, inertia, or whatever it's going to be. We sit here as people proposing budgets and tax increase and so forth to the town, you know, it's, you know, we get concerned when taxes are going up 3, $400 or so per year, so I just point that out as, what you're making a choice here on is, what's the level of increase? It's going up, and now the question is, do we want it to go up more for a greener product, or do we leave that choice as it is today to those who wish to elect that option? And I can tell you that we do receive a number of calls, and we have this past winter, from people when their electricity bills arrive, particularly in the winter months, and I anticipate we're going to see that again this coming winter, even if we stay with the basic service, just because of the increase that people are going to see in their bill. So, that's why I just want to point out to the board is, is that unfortunately, the costs are going to go up, it's a question of, do we now want to, at that same time, take that next step of increasing the mix beyond the default of which, you know, National Grid's subject to, and then we'd be subject to.
So, I have a question, are these the numbers we're going to be dealing with, or?
No, we have to bid this.
Okay.
And, and all that, as they noted, that's an indicative of what the market is. We have to bid this, and once the board, why I bring it to the board is, is when I come back with a bid award, I want it to be endorsed and approved by the board. I would intend to initiate that process right away, because energy markets right now are at a, as most favorable as they've been, you know, in the last several months. In fact, even the National Grid new rate, even though it's much lower than their winter rate, as they pointed out, going from 33 to 14, it's still 20% more than it was a year ago for the summer rate.
But do you have to know our structure here to do a bid?
No, yes, we do, because we have to tell people what supply we're going to draw, and it's not just the town, as was noted, it's commercial, I mean, the water district, the Chelmsford Water District uses this as part of their electricity supply. So, yes, we have to tell them what our default product is going to be, because most of our electricity supply by experience and by market forces is going to fall to the default, whichever one we choose, because of inertia and lack of movement, yes.
But if, but if we choose a non-basic one to be the default, then since the volume is more, it stands to reason, the price would be a little bit lower, possibly, or not?
No, that's not what I've seen. These were prices they gave us if we bid it, regardless of which one we choose. In other words, you know, the prices that you see provided for you.
We can't ask them to bid it as an, as option?
No, we do, but the prices that we see for indicative pricing is not dependent upon which one is the default. They're saying is, if you walk to the market, regardless of which one you choose the default, that's what the price you're going to receive as your default. So, that's what they, so because we're.
That seems to contradict the answer you just gave Ken.
Yes.
Like, we could, we could go, put this out to bid and say, give us the price for all three.
Right.
And then decide.
And then we'll tell you what we want the default to be.
We don't need to make a decision on the default tonight.
I know we didn't last time, we didn't make it last time.
We made it when we saw the bid.
Right.
Right. We have to, right, yes, we have to.
So, you can give us some time to think about it.
The problem is, when the bids come in, we have to notify them within hours of what the bid, if we're going to accept the bid, and therefore, I do need to know, because that's the problem, is we, when the bid comes in, I have to, basically, the bid usually comes in around 10, I get a call around noon, 1 o'clock, I have to notify them by mid-afternoon if we're going to accept the bid or not, even in lieu of the board's decision. So, I do need to know which way we're going as we're bidding this.
If you're going to accept it as a, as a bid that we will consider, or if you're going to award on it?
We have to award, we have to make a decision in the market commodity within hours. So, even though you technically don't award to the following meeting, I need to know when I come in, what is the board, what's the directive from the board in terms of accepting the bid on, because they won't hold the price for a day, never mind three days, if we get in on a Thursday and ask to come in on a Monday. They just, the market, the market is just that volatile, and.
I guess my, my guess is they're locking in commodity contracts.
Exactly.
That's why.
Yeah, that's why.
And the pricing on a commodity is trading, is trading hourly, so.
Exactly.
So, I wanted to make a couple more comments as you make the decision here. The federal government uses for policy decision-making something called the social cost of carbon impact, which is if you had carbon that you are putting out, and yeah, there's an impact in the environment. Currently, the rate number used statistically is used at $51 per ton. You could use a rough estimate of about 1 megawatt, 1,000 kilowatt hours, give or take, is about a ton of emissions, give or take, plus or minus 10%, some number like that, depending on the energy mix. That number just began, EPA just announced a potential for running that number up to $190 per ton, even though the IPCC recommends numbers anywhere between $190 to $300 per ton, based on a discount rate of 2.5 to 1.5%, which is the future value of the impact, how quickly you depreciate the value of the future, some of you are probably very familiar with. So, that runs at about, at the lowest, $51, which the current administration uses at the, just as a policy-level decision, is 5 cents per kilowatt hour addition. So, if you were to take 13.8, which is a basic, if you were to take the 13.8 cents per kilowatt hour, and you assume that there is 1,000 kilowatt hours that you consume, and that's, you're somewhere, somehow planting a tree somewhere at $51 a ton equal, and you technically are paying 18.1 cents per kilowatt hour, give or take. So, that gives you a perspective that if you were to actually switch to 100% clean, we would still be saving 2 cents per kilowatt hour at that social cost of offsetting something. If everyone wanted to do good and pay $51.
That cost is only true if everyone does it.
Correct, but it's a point that, that you have that, that that's an estimate of how much everyone would have to do, because if we have to achieve net zero, it's not, somebody gets net zero and somebody, I mean, you could, as long, you know, somebody gets somehow extra trees out, but roughly, right, give or take. Just giving you a context of what that metric is, I'm not even considering the high numbers the true cost, so just giving you some context to decision-making where it leads us.
So, I want to be clear with something Paul said, because some different numbers went around, but so you, what I'm understanding is, the choice, the Chelmsford Choice greener total bill, all in, is about $13 more a month than the Chelmsford Choice basic. So, it's going to cost me about $144 a year for a house that's using 615 kilowatt hours.
That's correct.
And if I decide to go to the high-end one, then it's going to cost me about $240 a year, all in.
If you go, if you go back a couple of slides, that busy slide shows you the, right there.
Yeah, I see it.
And the bottom.
That's what I just read.
Middle and left, so it goes from 146.56 to 169.69 would be if you left it as the basic choice, and that comes up to $277 over a year. And if you go to the greater one to 182, then it goes to 425. So, the difference there is 140, but $148.
But me being a doubting Thomas, you know, if I saw three bills, like literally a National Grid bill, because I know, there's like 10 lines there, some are based on usage, some are just delivered, whatever, and you had one at 300 kilowatts, 600, 900, and you gave in the total of the bottom line at the month, on average, I think that slide would be a little bit more clearer. It's all here, but I'm searching for the answers, as opposed to if you just took three.
Understood, understood.
Kilowatt hour bills.
Understood.
At different levels, and just gave me the total cost, because I'm going to go check, take my work bill, and I'm also going to take my home bill, and I'm going to check these numbers against it and see what the cost is to me.
Yeah.
Which just means I got to go do more work to make my decision.
Let me give you some quick numbers, if I can do my math as fast as I can here. Let me give you some quick numbers, if I can do my math as fast as I can here. I pre-computed some numbers, statistical modeling here, on the, a new supply rate of about 50% green, give or take, with some additional higher distribution costs to happen during the next two years. I modeled that at about, so right now, the distribution cost is at about 14 cents. So I modeled that at about 16 cents, give or take, as, as the distribution number within the next three years to happen, give, National Grid will raise that. And I used a number of 50%, which was at 15.8. So I used a number of, give or take, 32 cents per kilowatt-hour total, that's coming out. And I have numbers only for annuals, so we'll do the reverse math very quickly. But for an 8,000 kilowatt-hour usage per year, that number stands to be about 2,644, which roughly translates to just about $220 to $230 fully loaded per year, on an 8,000 kilowatt-hour per year, which is just about 650, 680 kilowatt-hours.
I get everything.
That's the 50% number.
I get everything you guys are saying. I'm trying to figure out how to sell it to the public.
Right, right, right.
Right? And so that's what I'm saying. You gave me a slide with three examples of what Joe on the street,
Yeah.
who doesn't do statistical modeling or any of that,
Right.
wants to know what his bottom-line bill is going to look like.
Correct.
And you gave him three, a small household cape,
Yep.
with two bedrooms,
We'll do that.
a four-bedroom, and a, and someone that's got central, a heated pool and everything else.
We'll do that.
Here's your average cost for you, three choices.
Yeah, we'll provide that info to you, and we'll, we'll have a couple of line items or multiple, so that people can get some great, much more clarity-grade ones, because their numbers could change a bit. So we'll certainly do that.
The question is, is what are we selling?
Right.
Are we, are we going with the low-cost alternative and then selling them that they can upgrade for a smaller cost? Or are we going with the mid-one and then saying, well, you can save more by going this way, or pay more by going the other way? Because my concern is, I'm not concerned about anybody in this room making those choices. My concern is, there are thousands of residents
Who don't pay attention.
who aren't paying attention, and many of whom may be on fixed incomes or other things, who are the ones who are, who may, may bear, may have a struggle bearing that cost.
Paul, I think I'm 100% with you, because, you know, we're the fiduciaries of the town for the taxpayers, right? So we can't just surprise them with these costs. We have to figure out what's the best thing for most people in their pockets, and then support the committee so they can go out and get the word out, and let educated consumers go in and, and make their decisions. We're here to support you guys and set policy and say, we love what you're doing, and we want you to succeed. I don't know if I can take the responsibility to, if someone's sleeping, to hit them with a higher bill every month. As much as I love what you guys are doing, and I recycle, and I buy into everything you're talking about, I don't know if I can sit there and say to the residents, ha, ha, surprise, three months down the road. You can, oh, don't worry, now you can downgrade, but for the last three months, you've been paying an extra $20 a month. Sorry about that.
Where, where is the, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, I wanted to ask the question. If, if it may be possible that we have gotten lucky with the Chelmsford Choice program itself and aggregating demand, but would that be something that Select Board would undo and let all the residents select their own electricity?
No way.
Why not?
Why? Because when I opened my bill in the middle of the winter last year, and I saw that I had, I had defaulted, and I, I was looking at the offers I was getting in the mail, I was like, oh my God, thank God I'm in this program.
We were very fortunate.
Thank God, but what if rates went down and you were, and, and the selected program was costlier?
But they can always opt out of the Chelmsford Choice program. The reason that this was pushed and advocated by municipalities, and why this town and town meeting approved it, was because we were going to save residents money. But more importantly, what's the concern is that has risen since deregulation, is the predatory practices of many of the private suppliers who come in, as you described, saying, oh, you can pay a ridiculously low rate, but, oh, if you, if you get to opt out at the end of the period, your rate goes up to ridiculous amounts. And that's, that's why the attorney, the now governor, former.
Go back to sleep.
Right, because the now governor, who was a former Attorney General, was basically considering seeking legislation to eliminate electricity supply competition, because people are basically being gouged.
So the other question that I would have.
Is there a path to, by a certain date, we have to be net zero? A certain year, right?
Twenty fifty.
2050 or something like that?
Twenty fifty, yeah.
Okay, so is there a path that, like, are we forging new ground here, or is there a path that municipalities are taking? Where they're taking more than, this would be more than a baby step, right? Because you're actually defaulting people who aren't paying attention into the middle one. Whereas before, it was, let's default to the basic, and then you can opt to go greener.
There are towns who are opting the greenest as the default.
There are.
Yeah. In fact, the city of Lowell has a, you know, Christine's here, Christine Clancy knows, the city of Lowell has a greener default than the, than the basic for the city of Lowell. Yeah, my town, the default, is the, is the greenest, so, you know, so where I live. So there are towns, the answer to your question, yeah, there are towns doing it. I think even his slides before showed.
And when you get defaulted to the greenest, do you have the option to, to opt out of that and go backwards?
I think that's a state mandate, right? That you have that other option.
Well, yeah, you have to have the option, yeah, yeah. Or they can just opt out of the program altogether, and then, and that's when you'll, that's when you'll see people just going. Yeah, you see people going, but going to other suppliers and/or National Grid default. And, you know, you'll, you'll, you know, I know George and Pat were here. When we first did this, people were outraged that we were sticking our nose into people's electricity supply business. It turns out, it ended up being a beneficial, but you're right. People could easily just say, we're out. And, and, but again, it takes that initiative to opt out, and that's why this, this is why it was an opt-out versus an opt-in, because they knew if it was an opt-in, that people wouldn't do it.
People wouldn't do it.
Exactly.
So is there something that the board wants?
So when do we have to make this decision? Are you looking for it today?
I'm looking for it tonight, because they basically get going and, and hit.
So I have one more question, maybe, to answer this, or this. If this lever is taken out of the toolbox, and it will continue to be the same thing, as nobody wants in the Select Board to make a decision, this does pose and impose a cost on future generations within Chelmsford, one way or the other.
Well, not just in Chelmsford, but on the world.
Doesn't matter.
Right? And everybody else's decision puts the cost on us.
Correct, but it does, at least from a Chelmsford cost, there is a cost that this Select Board will be forcing future Chelmsfordians to take. So there's, that's the other thing that you are obligated or to protect against.
I appreciate what you're saying. I totally do.
Right.
For me, it's the question of defaulting to enforcing people, because let's face it, 99% of everybody is, it just comes in, and whatever the default is, is what's going to happen, versus sending them something, maybe more than once, that explains this simply to them, as Ken was mentioning, you know, and not defaulting them to it, but explaining it in simple terms, not in statistical terms, not in things that are more abstract to the normal people, because they don't have 10 minutes to look at their bill. So some way to get them so they can make an informed choice by showing them it's going to be, you know, for a 2,000-square-foot home, it's typically this. For a pool, it's typically that. Air conditioning and that, it's this, just to give them a quick sense of it.
I don't have as a time, I, I get a letter like that, I throw it out. I don't even read it.
Get inserts like that now, don't you?
If the argument is the same thing, it's the same argument, that's why the state instituted a policy. The state didn't go and say, everybody go and build your own stuff.
Also didn't get rid of the low one. The low, the, the default or the normal one, they didn't get rid of that either.
Absolutely, but they did raise every year. But they did raise every year, the minimum.
That's fine, but, but they have the same goal as us. 2050?
Yes.
And, and, I'm, I'm looking at, I know what you're saying, and I agree. Trying not to be argumentative, but not to take people's choices away by defaulting them into something that maybe they don't want, and, you know, okay.
Paul, are we going to have to meet before the 10th anyway to get a, a town meeting warrant signed?
No, my, my thought would be on the 10th, you would sign the warrant, and the town meeting would take place on the 27th, the Thursday. So that would give you the 14-days posting.
You think town meeting's going to go more than one night?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Well, I mean, there's zoning, there's, there's, they're, they're coming in with an opt-in code for, for, you know, energy code. I mean, we, we've spent time tonight debating this, imagine what that's going to be.
So Ken and I think Mark had asked for kind of like the simple layman's view to help enable a decision here. Is there, what's the downside of doing that in two weeks?
Well, the, I mean, the downside is, every day that goes by, we don't know what, it's, it's the ongoing downside. In other words, we, we don't know what the electricity market's going to be two weeks from now, or two months from now. I mean, I, I'm not, we, we have to have a, a contract in place by August, to be honest. I mean, it's not, yeah, doesn't, but, you know, like, I felt good this past week, and I was able to buy gas for my car at 286, 268 a gallon.
Where?
At BJ's and Lemon's there with the 15-cent discount. I, my concern, it's, it's an uncertainty. My concern is, is you go further into the spring, energy costs tend to rise. But on the other hand, if you think that the whole economy's going to collapse and.
Is there something that this board would like that will help better inform your decision?
Yeah, because what I'm looking for is the board to say, hey, this is the direction that we want.
No, 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 she's asking.
I'm asking you.
And the reason I'm asking for it now is, I really intend to go to market as soon as possible. That's a judgment call.
I understand.
But if you prefer me not to, I'll hold off.
The two weeks doesn't really bother me, because natural gas prices have tanked, and I'm not worried about that, but it's here. I'm just saying, if they're going to do a presentation in the future, it might be easier if they did three samples of an actual bill, so the normal resident can look at it and say, oh, that looks familiar to me, I get it. The numbers are all here for me to make a decision. I don't need.
I, I, I agree with what you're saying, because, yeah, I mean, if, if you re, if you revise this, this chart, it's not going to change the bottom line, basically.
I just think there's a better way to sell it.
Right, which, whatever word you want to use, but, I mean, I'm ready to make a, make a decision tonight.
Can you share your thoughts?
I, I would go with what they recommended, have the default be the, the greener, the 50%. And then do whatever we can to spread the word to people that, for whatever reason, cannot afford it, or just don't want to, that have, they do have that option. And I think we have ways to get that word out.
Through the newsletters or mailings with the tax bill and stuff like that?
Exactly, even with the, even with the, the census. I mean, that's something that goes to everybody.
Paul, what don't you like about, you're making a face over there.
No, nothing, I'm not saying anything.
I mean, I will say to Pat's comment there, I remember when we first got the Choice piece of mailing, and I read it, because, you know, it was, it was clear. I think if you put something on it that says, warning, read this or your bill's going up, and they're going to read it. But if we go the green, we're, you're going to have to do something like that, you know, you're going to have to put a piece of paper that says,
Be the responsible thing to do.
Warning, your bill is going up if you do not read this. And then your hands.
Well, it's going to go up even if they.
No, but you gotta, you gotta scare them into reading it. I mean.
Well, I don't know if you need to scare them. I mean.
I don't, I know what Paul's saying. He doesn't want to get like 100 calls in one day screaming about their electric bill.
To move Chelmsford towards net zero, but here's the,
Right.
here's the financial impact of it.
And, and, and I think, you know, we can, we can ask them to come up with something, but as you said, I mean, you know, Bobby stands up there and he goes through all these iterations, and yeah, I mean, it goes right over my head.
Understood. There are people who are listening and, and.
So I think it needs to be something that, that, that we, you know, that we take from what they generate and basically reword it, so it's easier to, more understandable. So anyway, that would be my suggestion.
Mark?
Still thinking.
Okay, George. I can't, I'm sorry, my ear's blocked.
I go along with what Pat, Pat said.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think that I would be okay with that as kind of trying to responsibly move Chelmsford toward a greener place, but I, I'm not okay doing it without some, you know, hitting people over the head with a two-by-four education in very simple terms, and letting them know that they have,
Understood.
before they, before they have the sticker shock, that they have the option to opt down.
Understood.
You know, if there's a financial need to do that.
Understood. We're happy to also include in that same thing that, once this comes up in the next month or less, is the Energy Efficiency and Savings Program that we are working on in the background in terms of Mass Save Grant. We can add that to the same letter in there.
I, I, I guess I would be.
Depending on how it needs to be communicated.
I would be cautious to have too much information there.
Understood.
Just tackle the bill.
Yeah.
Just.
Yeah, the stuff can.
Are you still thinking, Mark?
No, I'm, I'm, unfortunately, I'd prefer to see the default where it is, and give them the information to make a good decision, and leave it at that. I don't like when there's other options. I don't like the government necessarily making their decisions. I think people should make their decisions.
But that's exactly what we're doing, no matter which way it is.
No, I, I don't want to, because the default is the default for a reason. That's because nobody reads anything. And I don't think they should be defaulted into a higher bill because they didn't read anything. So that's my feeling on it, Pat.
Okay.
My, my feeling is also, what we're doing is what we should be doing, and we should be trying to cut it, but we should be by choice, because there still is a choice. So. That's just where I'm at.
I think I'm, I think I'm in Mark's camp. And I think if we did the same type of a mailer that said, warning, your bill's going up, let's make the planet greener in doing it, or something like that.
So you're changing that.
Well, I, no, I was never, I didn't say either way.
You were agreeing with that.
No, I, no.
I didn't hear him say that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I really feel like, you know, we get so many concerns about costing this town, that I don't, I, I can't consciously default someone into a higher-cost plan, because they're too busy raising kids and doing everything else. But I think if we got the right message out, you'd get, in the end, I think you're going to get the same people either way. And I, instead of having someone get, and I don't want to use this word loosely, tricked into paying higher costs for three months before they realize they could default down. I think in the end, it's going to, if someone's going to do it, they're going to do it.
And then that phone's going to be ringing off the hook.
So Virginia, what do you?
George?
I'm, I'm the same way.
Which way are you feeling?
We, we, I, I do.
With Pat?
With Pat, yeah.
So that's kind of.
So what about you?
Well, I already said I.
She agrees with you.
Only if there's some kind of a two-by-four communication, either a priori or simultaneously. Because I, I mean, I have the, I, I share the concern.
Oh, for sure, I do too.
I don't know how much responsibility we take for people not reading. I'm one of those people, if it's too long, I throw it in the trash, too.
So I will make one comment, though, about your feeling on this. The last time we voted on this, you voted to have the greener be the default, in case you don't remember. Do you remember?
I mean, I'm, I'll tell you this, Pat, I, I feel in my mind, as we're talking about it, I'm almost, I'm more frustrated with the people who don't read their recycling flyers and throw their plastic bags in the dumpster out back, and, and part of me wants to, well, let's show them and put the, the middle option in as the default, and then everybody will start reading the stuff they're supposed to read, and we'll get better results. So I'm, I, I get both sides of this, but I, I don't know if I can. There's been a lot of increases in this town in the last two years, between property taxes and all the other increases we've seen, and I just think throwing this one on is is just adding insult to injury.
Do you want me to make a motion?
How, how does it add insult to injury if they can still default down? That's what I'm not understanding. There's still the choice to default, to, to opt out. It's a question of whether you opt out now, or whether you opt in?
I, I'm with Mark. I don't know how many people are going to take the time to actually read and understand they can opt out. I think they're going to get their bill and go, oh my God, my electric bill went up again, just like the news has been saying it's going to happen. And they're not going to pay attention to go and.
Okay. You can't force them to do everything. So. Can't force them to read something.
Right, and that's why I don't want to force them to go into the middle.
Paul, if we.
And I don't want to answer the question that says, if the state has the same goals as we have, as a town, why is that option still there? If we need to really move to the middle, why don't we just all move to the middle as an aggregate and maybe get. If we need to really move to the middle, why don't we just all move to the middle as an aggregate and maybe get better, better rates in some, somehow, or whatever? I don't know how I'd answer that question.
You mean, like, across the state, why aren't they pushing to just bump to the middle?
There's a mandated, that a basic is there.
They're slowly inching it up as, as they, in the presentation.
Exactly. So, but, but they're inching it up in a way, I assume, helps with the 2050 date in mind as well. So how do you answer that question? I mean, I, I mean, that's one question I have that's in my head. The other one's just the basic, like I said before, about deciding for the consumer.
Do we know how many people now opt?
Not many.
Very few. I mean, the numbers are, the, the numbers are infinites- you know, you got 96 percent are in the default. Despite the efforts that we've had to educate, promote, and so forth. Most people-
That's been ineffective.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's about-
The last information I knew was 120 households had opted up to greener and greenest.
That's it, huh?
That is it.
120 households out of the town is over 11,000, yeah. That's what I'm saying, it's infinitesimal.
I would also probably just, maybe if it helps, I, I understand the moral dilemma that you have where you, from where you come, but, or where you sit and have to answer things, but we advise a select board on reaching net zero as such. So this is something that the select board also signed up to in some sense. And, and town meeting actually voted to get us, and this is a viable pathway. Potentially, and I don't offer this as a way of knowing where the future will lie, but potentially this approach allows us to buy time in the event that the replacement of fossil fuel based heating, which is a significant contributor that the state has, is, is pushing for and moving things in the heat pump direction, does not take that much speed, or does not bring that much change that's supposed to reduce it. Then this provides a little bit of relief in balancing that, potentially, just a little bit. I don't know how much. Again, it's a question of moving that and buying us a little bit more time. And I don't know how much time, but a little bit more time. That's all. So that's the other way I look at it personally, to say, can we do something now without burdening the future? It's a challenging goal. I'm not saying that it is not, and it's not, you know, $200 extra per year on a fixed income is huge. But from our point of view, we believe that the integrated set of actions that we're taking in terms of going after heating efficiencies, upgrades, doing the right things there, hopefully reduces that over time.
I agree with you, but the problem I have is that it's not $200. It's 200 here, it's 400 in taxes. It's, it's all these other things that are just adding up on everybody. And when there is an option, I just have trouble making their decision to pay 200 more. That's just where I'm at now.
So do you want a motion?
I think I, I have the sense of the board, three to two. I, I, you know, if you go to the, go with the middle. Okay. Our next agenda item is Public Works Director Christine Clancy's here for three items. The first one is the paving and sidewalk master plan update. That is the comprehensive assessment of the town's 46 and a half miles of sidewalks, plus or minus. And this sort of follows where we were a year ago when we did a similar analysis on the roadways conditions. And, and then following this will be the plan for road and sidewalk construction for the upcoming construction season and subsequent two years. Good evening, Christine.
Good evening, select board members. I'm also here tonight with our town engineer, I'm sorry, our town engineer, Tony Repucci. So he'll also be presenting a portion of this presentation. I don't know if, if you can just go back to the first slide?
Oh, sorry.
That's all right.
You don't wanna start at the end?
Uh, start, yeah, I mean, if we could, if we would like.
It's getting late.
We'll try to keep this as informative, yet as quick as possible. So, here tonight to give an update on this year's paving and sidewalk master plan update. I know it was about a year ago that there was a presentation provided on, on paving and sidewalk plan. Next slide, please. So, just some agenda topics. What we'll be going over tonight is the pavement management system overview. A summary of what we completed for paving this past year, a summary of what we completed for sidewalks this past year. What we are planning to pave this year, also sidewalk plan. Also, what we typically do is we publish what I call a 2024, 2025 paving outlook, looking ahead at the next couple of years, what our current plan is. And then Tony will speak to our sidewalk master plan development overview. We, we did hire a consultant, environmental partners, to, to conduct a assessment, an analysis, that develops a really thorough inventory and assessment of our sidewalk program and helping to prioritize how we might wanna approach the sidewalk replacement, or even new, new sidewalks within our system. And then we'll just look at next steps and questions. Next slide, please. So in 2012, the town did begin the pavement management system, and it was in 2021 that it was reevaluated. VHB had conducted the, the assessment. It was 187 miles of all town roads. This created a database that we do manage. We use this database as a planning tool to help, help identify sidewalk, or sorry, roads that we want to rehabilitate each year, or, or apply preventative maintenance. So pavement management looks both at preventative maintenance, and we'll, we'll discuss this in this presentation, and also rehabilitation, more in-depth, whether it be mill and overlay or reclaim. Are also the pavement management system database does look at roadway classifications, arterial, collectors, or local roads, the three classifications. And so when we have this pavement management database, there is higher ratings given to roads that are used more frequently, such as arterial roads. And also, I like to highlight that this is a, we call this a, a planning tool. There are other items that go into how we develop our paving list annually. We do meet with utility companies, the gas company, the water utility, to see what their plans are, to see if we need to expedite potentially a paving, a street on the paving list, or if we wanna push it off, or sometimes if the development, if we know development is coming in, maybe we want them to come in to do their work before we go and pave the street. We also look at this to see where, if we wanna catch roads before they fall into a more expensive repair method. And it's one example I like to point out is Drum Hill Road. We are proposing to do that this year as mill and overlay. And it is at a rating where if we let it go maybe another winter, we might have to rehabilitate it, which is a more in-depth, costly, and also this more intense, construction-wise process. Next slide, please. So the pavement management system really rates, each road is rated, and I think you've often heard the term of pavement condition index. Each, so each road is given a rating, zero being the impassable condition, really down to gravel. And then 100 is a road that's in perfect condition, just recently paved. And roads, in our, in our database, we have roads that are broken down to different segments. So it's not just, you know, an entire road. Example, North Road, that is broken into segments, and that's how we manage our database and assign ratings to each of the systems, or each of the roads. Next slide, please. This, this is an overview of some of the PCI indexes and the treatments that are, we do to each road. So, anything with a rating of 93 to 100 is in excellent condition. We have no plans to do anything. Anything that is between 86 and 92 is in good condition. This is where we sometimes have to do some crack sealing or other localized repairs. We do an annual crack sealing contract. Then we get into preventative maintenance. That's where we're between 73 and 85. This is where the road is in fair condition, but you start to see some cracking. Potentially in need of some crack sealing or, or other surface treatment, and we'll talk about it in a little bit. We are doing a pilot program of micro sealing, which essentially like seal coating your driveway. We'll be seal coating some roads as a pilot program. And then you get into the structural improvements. This is where the bulk of our, our, our money goes between chapter 90 and capital. 61 to 9, 61 to 72. It's deficient condition, pavement, surface, structure, in need of added strength. So typical repairs and mill and overlay with sometimes leveling. And then below that, poor condition, this is where roads, we have more frequent complaints about the condition of the roads. And these need not just the rehabilitation of the pavement layer, but also the sub base. And so we're looking at full depth construction. But typically, we do reclamation, which reclamation is you actually crush and pulverize not just the asphalt layer, but also the sub base layer. And reuse that, create a stabilized base, and then you put your, your top course, or your, your binder and top course on top of that. And we are doing that contract this year, which we'll talk about. Next slide, please. So this is just a snapshot as of this, or as of last week, based on our current database. And like I said, we do use this as a live document, planning document, where we do update based on what we do each year. And so, of all the mileage, just, just short of 188 miles, 18.7 miles are candidates for crack sealing. That's the average PCI of 88. 50 miles is do nothing. They're in perfect or near, you know, are in great condition. PC, average PCI 98. Most of these are probably under mortitorium or just falling off the mortitorium list. Then we get into micro sealing. This is a program we have not done before. We've done crack sealing, but micro sealing is where you can, like I said, apply a coating to the entire roadway width. It seals all cracks. And it, it's supposed to lengthen the longevity of the pavement. And that's average rating of 77. Then, mill and overlay, so about 50 miles, we have in our system that are candidates for mill and overlay, average PCI of 66. And then reclamation or pulverizing, this, this also could be full depth, but we, we, as long as we have suitable sub base, we opt to, to do reclamation. So 30 miles are candidates for this operation, and that's about average PCI of 53. And the cost, they become more costly, obviously, as you provide, as you do, as you go down this, this list. Just wanted to note in terms of a backlog, as, as of our 2021 pavement management report, we had just under a $40 million backlog in work. That number, I mean, we always will need to repair our roads, so I don't see that number disappearing, given the database that we'll always have to manage. So as we're paid, you know, as we put more money into our roads, we will update our PCI index annually, but we always will have to maintain, maintain roads. Our current PCI index is 76.
That's the current one. A year ago, was it 73?
No, it was 76. And so I'll get it. That's the thing, is it takes a lot to, we actually went in, in, the whole system has, I mentioned how there's different classifications. So if you pave a small side street versus Drum Hill Road, that, that Drum Hill Road has a higher benefit factor, so a higher rating. So we did plug everything into what we did last year. And we did, we'll go over in the next slide about how much money we spent in our, our rate, we've maintained our rating. And so it does take a lot to get to that higher rating. I don't see us ever getting to something, you know, jumping to high in the 80s, but I would say that we're probably comparable to neighboring communities. And I know in some cases, we're, we're actually improved from other communities. Next slide, please. So this is a list of what we have completed this year, and it is substantial, just under seven miles of side, of, of roadways that we have paved. Most of the restoration was through mill and overlay, just a couple of sections were reclamation. So set just under 6.9 file, 6.95 miles paved, just under $2 million spent, and an additional $115,000 spent in crack sealing. That PCI index is 76, and that is maintained from last year. Next slide, please. I just wanna also go over, I will focus on the, the paving, but I just also wanna recap what we did for sidewalks. Tony will get more in-depth into the sidewalk plan. But this is what we did last year for sidewalks. We replaced sidewalk on Bilricka Road, 2,600 linear feet. Fletcher Street, 2,600 linear feet. Middlesex Street, this is the only section where we added new sidewalk. It was 150 feet. It was when we were doing paving, and the city of Lowell was doing paving and sidewalk. We identified a gap of 150 feet. We were able to go in and close that gap, and that put sidewalk down all of Middlesex Street. So we did, that was the only section where we added new sidewalk for a relatively low cost. Washington Street, just on, just 179 linear feet. Wilson Street, 200 linear feet. In Vinyl Square, 595 linear feet. And our standard is granite curbing with asphalt side, asphalt sidewalk, concrete ramps, pedestrian ramps. We also in this did, did replace some detectable panels or concrete ramps around town. So in total, that's 1.21 miles, replaced, constructed, like I said, mostly replaced, and just $339,264 spent. Next slide, please. So this is our 2023 paving plan. So this year, we're planning to do 7.4 miles of mill and overlay. Of that, 2.94 miles, it will be done by the state. All of Groton Road and North Road from the Rotary to 495 Overpass is proposed to be mill and overlaid. We are working with the water department because they are, they do wanna replace their water main or sections along Groton Road. So that will, depending on the timing of the water main work, this work could potentially be pushed until next spring.
Is, I'm the, so North Road, is that, is, the Rotary to the 495 Overpass is for North Road?
Yes.
So it's just that little bit-
Yes.
-south of the Rotary?
Yes, that's just that little bit. And then Groton Road is, makes up most of the remaining amount.
Groton Road's the whole thing?
Yes.
From vinyl square up-
To Town Line.
Okay.
Well, you say a little bit, but from the Rotary to 25 is a mile?
It actually is mi- yeah, it is substantial.
It's pretty big.
Okay.
I don't have the breakdown with me, but of exactly how it breaks up in totality, it's two, just under three miles. We are proposing 1.5 miles of micro sealing. This contract actually was recently awarded at a select board meeting. And this is our pilot program to see how, if it's something we can, wanna continue doing annually. Other communities are trying it out. It, like I said, it will extend the life of these roads. At, and at, you know, the cost of doing micro sealing versus the cost of doing mill and overlay or reclaim is substantially less. We're proposing 2.6 miles of reclaim. And this is where we, this is the process that requires the sub base to be structurally restored. This is more, you know, we have to make sure the contractors are aware of mountain dust control. So this is a more extensive construction process. And this contract is actually just going out to bid next week, and this is the last contract that we'll be awarding. We're proposing a half a mile of spot milling on Chelmsford Street. I know Chelmsford Street is proposed for reconstruction, 2025, potentially 2026. We just have a couple areas, especially near Alpine Lane, where the road is really unraveling. We've had many repairs out there, and it's at a point where we have to do something. So we're looking to spend some money there. We do, we did receive, I think it was just over $500,000 in RAP money, winter recovery assistant money from the state. So we're proposing to use some of that leftover money that we had for this pro, for that spot milling. And we've already used it this year for some other spot milling. So in totality, the estimated construction cost, because we still have to award and bid the reclaim project, is $5.2 million for 12 miles of paving. So substantially, last year was just under, and two miles of that will be, or sorry, three miles of that will be by the state. And $1, $1 million of that would be by the state. Additionally, we are doing a crack sealing project. We, the bid came, was very favorable, $37,000. We do this annually, and I think it is a good process to do a good program, to not just have, to focus, this is the preventative maintenance, where we wanna, if we crack seal annually, that will extend the longevity of some of our roads. Next slide, please.
Quick question. On the micro sealing, how long until, how will you evaluate that? As to whether it's worth continuing the project or-
Sure. So it's probably gonna take at least the first winter. And also, I know in some communities, they do it more frequently, but they have less castings in the road. It seems like it has been more costly where you have more casting, so drainage structures, sewer structures. I know Lowell's also looking at doing this. The state has done it in some aspects. You get to Groton, Westford, they do it more frequently. They have less casting. So a lot of the work is around castings, because you wanna make sure you don't cover that casting. So they have to, essentially, they put like a sticker on each casting and make sure- Essentially they put like a sticker on each casting and make sure that that is, um, sealed around it. So I would say at least in the next year, we'll, we'll go back out to these streets and, and document, um, at least by visually. And I don't know if we would have to do any other testing. And then I, we probably would see, I mean, I think by next, by the spring, we'll, we'll know if we're going to continue as another pilot. There is, it on some, there's also, we look at, um, the V, how many vehicles go on streets, so these, there are some. Streets that would likely not be great candidates for, um, for micro sealing.
Traffic.
Because of traffic, hi- higher volume of traffic. So this just shows the plan of our, our paving plan, I already went over the mileage, but this is broken down by contract. And this is a listing of each street that we plan to do this year. This will, as of right now, this isn't on our website, but we're putting this on the website tomorrow. I know there's some, you know, from last year, some of the information was published, so we'll make sure this is all on the, our website as of tomorrow. So a reclaim project, a micro sealing project and a melon overlay project. And, um, we ha, we still have to bid out the reclaim project, which I said hits the streets this Wednesday. Next slide, please. And this is the look ahead at two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five, we can also, uh, for paving, we can publish this on our website, our DPW website. It is something that if, if, uh, if water department says they have to do a street, it's something that we could potentially modify. But I think this is a really good indicator of what we're planning on doing in two thousand four and two thousand twenty-five. So, and this is also based off of the current, if you see the listing here, it drastically drops from what we previously showed because of the funding. We are still waiting on addition, potentially additional chapter ninety funding. Also, if, you know, I know that we've received some additional funding at Falltown Meeting in previous. So if there's additional funding, we, we have a data, we can move some of this list from two thousand twenty-five or, um, or, you know, lengthen our list. But this is based on what we currently have for funding, which is the one, just short of one point two million dollars for chapter ninety. Um, and then four hundred thousand dollars for roadway capital. Next slide, please. And so Tony will get into our sidewalk master plan, but I, we did, uh, lay out what we intend to do for our sidewalk plan because we did have to bid that project. Uh, we are proposing one mile of sidewalk at four hundred thousand dollars, uh, estimated total construction. Twelve hundred linear feet on Church Street, twelve hundred sixty-five linear feet on Main Street, this is between School Street to the town line. I know there was discussion of having extension, um, on Main Street where there isn't existing sidewalk. This is just, this is replacement of the existing sidewalk, not continuation of any new sidewalk. That would be part of a, a different project.
I think the question that was posed is there's, there is, there is another existing sidewalk, but it's not on your map.
So, yeah. So we will, so we will get that, that was something that was potential, I think it was a hundred thirty feet of sidewalk. And so when we did receive this master plan, it is a draft master plan. So there might be some small areas that were missed and we think that might have been one that missed.
So you'll put that one in and get it assessed with all the other ones.
So we will, yes, yes, yeah, and so just to speak to that is we, um, we do have our dra, uh, draft master plan and, uh, we have reviewed it. Now that the snow has melted, we're going to go out and double check every area. I would say it's, that hopefully is one of the odd locations where, wow, there was a piece of sidewalk missing. But in terms of the larger connections and other areas, we're, we're confident that everything's been collected. Two hundred and seventy linear feet of Central Square spot repair, this is, so in the center, we do have brick sidewalk. Four hundred fifteen linear feet of asphalt sidewalk repair on Wilson Street, the curb will remain, so that cost of replacement is less. We can take the cost of the curbing replacement out of it. And then we are paving Essex Place and Pershuron Road and those, so looking at the sidewalk master plan and looking at, um, us doing the roadway. Those are two candidates, so a thousand linear feet on Essex Place and nine hundred fifty linear feet on, of the entire length of Pershuron Road. Aside from that, and Tony will get into, um, our five oh four transition plan is that we are proposing to do, uh, curb, ADA curb ramps around town. We, I mean, we have nine hundred twenty-two across town, but looking at at least twenty locations, potentially a little more. Of replacing those to make sure that they are brought up to be ADA compliant, um, or often detectable panels are, are removed from those. So making sure we add that also into this plan and that is part of our estimated cost. The state is doing a, and I believe they plan to start it this summer, I don't have a definitive timeline, as of the latest, it's this summer. On Tingsborough Road between Vinyl Square and Wellman, Wellman Ave, it's twenty-six hundred linear feet of sidewalk. And that is, it's outside of the one mile or the four hundred thousand dollars and that's what the state is planning to do. And at that, this time I'll turn it over to Tony Repucci, our town engineer. Like I said, he'll get into, into detail about the sidewalk assessment master plan, um, the assessment that was completed. And, uh, our recommendations coming out of that. Thank you, and then we can answer questions.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, so just to start off, uh, we did hire environmental partners who did the work, uh, this fall and into the winter. Uh, the inventory that was done of the assessment included the sidewalk sections. This was, uh, overall condition, whether it was excellent, good, fair, poor, needs replacement. As well as point defects in sidewalks that were excellent or good. And those, uh, point defects were either maintenance, structural or obstruction. After that, there was the pedestrian curb ramp assessment, this was done in good, poor or fair condition. Or was there a detectable warning panel, yes or no, uh, that is required for ADA compliance. Uh, the database was developed with information, uh, to allow for future updates. That is in a deliverable set, which is going to be GIS baselines as well as Excel that has linked into that data. So going forward, it's something that we'll be able to update ourselves, uh, and not have to rely necessarily on environmental partners going forward. Uh, and an online portal of inventory and assessment for future planning. You're going to see these in, uh, later slides, uh, going through the interactive map that was created by them, has been shared with us. And how as you move across town and look in different areas, the interactive map kind of changes and does live updates, making it a. Quick and easy way to make, uh, just rough, uh, planning judgment calls or, or assessment costs. As far as the sidewalk master plan, uh, I'll go over the explanation of the methodology used for prioritization, uh, that's going to be in two slides. The section five oh four transition plan and curb ramp prioritization, the existing sidewalk recommended improvement priorities, preliminary estimate. And going through the decision matrix that is used by EP through their GIS system for coming up with those roads. And, uh, recommendations of new sidewalk recommended priorities and estimated cost, costs. This is going to be near the end, how it goes through that decision matrix and how those sidewalk segments were chosen, uh, through town staff and then working with EP for those. Next slide. Uh, so just quickly, EP evaluated the forty-six point five miles of sidewalk. There were nine hundred and twenty-two pedestrian curb ramps, seven hundred and fifty-six of which were owned by the town. For curb ramps, they did material, general condition, opening width, slope reading, ramp type, everything that we are asking for to see if it was ADA compliant. Uh, and then as far as sidewalks, they went into length, width, general condition, material type, structural issues. Uh, and whether or not there was a grass strip and all this information is stored within the GIS. And so as we go through our analysis, we'll be able to then know, um, exactly what's out there and in the network. Next slide. So, uh, this is the, uh, design or decision matrix, uh, that EP had worked on with some input from the town. And you can see that it breaks down from a tier one to tier four. The colors at the bottom, there's like a brick color which is poor, vanilla color fair and green which is good. And so that is the condition of the sidewalk. And as you look through it, tier one would be a high pedestrian usage on an arterial roadway. Pedestrian usage, I'm going to get into in a few slides on how we had a heat map across town, knowing where or. Trying to predict and indicate where there'd be the most pedestrians walking. So if you're in one of those high zones while also being on a arterial roadway and being in a poor conditioned sidewalk. That would be considered the, the top tier of the list, something that should get it on max priority. And as you move down and across the list, it changes from arterial to collector roads. It'll then change from a fair conditioned in a high usage area versus a poor condition on a, on a dead end road where no one's really walking to. And so forth, as you work down across the, uh, decision matrix. The overall was, it's based on pedestrian usage score, general condition, and then the functional class of the roadway in that order. So it does, uh, go by the pedestrian, uh, sorry, by the general condition of the sidewalk is the, the first factor. Then followed by usage score and then finally by the, the road segment that it's on. Uh, next slide. Uh, so this is a, an example of one of those pedestrian usage maps. We worked with EP, we gave them, uh, points of interest, we gave all, all of the schools with a one mile buffer, libraries. We went over the Bruce Freeman Trail, Varney Playground, Freeman Lake, Hart Pond, Roberts Field. Uh, we went through the different business districts as well as community locations and the senior center. And each one of those has a different weighted average. And so with that, that creates this heat map and you can see that it's, um, with the heat map, that's, uh, the first pedestrian use. This is the area where most people are trying to walk to and so that's what kind of generates that, that first function. Next slide. If at any point I talk too fast, just, you can try to slow me down. So this is our sidewalk master plan, existing network. Overall, our network is actually is in fairly good condition. We have four point four miles of excellent, twenty-six point twenty-seven of good, eleven of fair and only four, uh, sorry, eight percent of the network in poor or replace. So overall, our network does look pretty good. Uh, the backlog though, unfortunately for the poor and fair, uh, is about nineteen point nine million dollars in replacement. Next slide. So this is the existing, uh, network that was done, put through that decision matrix. And as you can see on here, Church, Essex and Pershuron are all within the top ten. Poplar, Dalton and others are also in there. And if you look through it, you can see that they're poor conditioned sidewalks and that they're within those zones of, of high interest or high usage for pedestrians. Next slide. Uh, so this, uh, we're going to start talking about the sidewalk master plan, five oh four transition plan. Uh, this is a vocational rehabilitation act or section five oh four. Uh, in which the town was obligated to have a budget and schedule for improvements for ADA deficiencies. Uh, with this plan that EP has put together, we have fulfilled that obligation going forward. Uh, in it, you can see that the town has nine hundred and twenty-two curb ramp locations, seven hundred and fifty-six of which are owned by the town. Of those, there's fifty-one percent in concrete, forty-seven percent of those are in asphalt. Seventy-six percent are in good condition. However, that does not mean that they are ADA compliant. A ramp could meet a good condition standard for the material and how it looks. If it doesn't have a detectable warning panel, then it would no longer be considered ADA compliant and would have to go forward and change that. Uh, and I'll get into that in one of the next slides.
Section five oh four, is that part of the mass general law or?
Uh, that's the vocational rehabilitation act, section five oh four of that. I believe it was twenty sixteen or twenty eighteen, uh, I'd have to look into that date for you. So the other thing, uh, before we move on for the curb ramp, sorry.
Sorry.
Uh, ramps were grouped based on location, um, which led to, uh, if you have a poor ramp or two poor ramps and one fair ramp. That intersection gets logged as poor, to make sure that we're not leaving behind ramps in different locations. Or we're not just grabbing a poor ramp when there could be work done at the same time, which would actually keep construction costs down. So each ramp was assigned, not just its ramp ID, but as well as an intersection ID. And so that way they're getting, they get grouped together, so when we move on to another slide, you might see one on the list, a good referenced, uh, curb ramp. But it's in a search, uh, an intersection with three other poor ones, so that's why it shows up in that information. Next slide. So as you see here, um, uh, it, the intersection, the prioritization was, uh, is done the same way for everything. So it goes through condition, then the usage and then on the major roads. And just as you can see, uh, Dalton Road is partnered with Dalton Roads, you see there's a good kind of six, six rows down. And a few other areas there, but because it's attached to all those intersections. And unless it wasn't ADA compliant, if it was good, we wouldn't touch them, but this is just make sure that we do attention, bring attention. Not just to a poor intersection, but, or poor ramp, but everything in that area. Next slide. So for the next seven slides, I'm going to show you images from that online mapping system, uh, that, uh, EP has us using. It's the interactive planning tool and I do have about ninety-eight percent confidence in this. As you mentioned earlier, someone did reach out noting there was a small section on Main Street as well as I believe Burton, Burton Lane. That didn't have, uh, sidewalks shown, I did reach out. I did hear back from EP saying that the data, uh, they're not sure if it was lost or it might not have been exported correctly. If that's the case, we'll be able to get in there by tomorrow or the next day. If it was not collected, that's something they will go out and, and collect. So I do apologize for that, I don't quite know the town, looking at it from a bird's eye view as everyone else, but so, um. I, I do feel that we are fairly confident, I have looked through it, um, at about ninety-eight percent confidence on this. Uh, so this is anyway, uh, the first is the entire area. You can see that it calls out all of the ramps, all the mileage in the bottom corner, it gives a breakdown of excellent, good, poor. Fair or that it needs, uh, to be replaced, uh, in segments and then as you move to the next slide. You'll see that as, uh, you zoom or move around to, uh, Summer Street, that it, it then changes and it'll tell you how many ramps are in that networked area, how many miles are in that area. And so this is a great, uh, tool for someone on the phone or someone that's looking to say if they wanted, uh, sidewalk on Toll Cross Road, where is it on the list or how much would it cost? I can, you can see the total mileage for poor and replacement and then would be able to quickly give them an estimate on it. And from there can then move forward and actually be a little bit more informed on it versus not having a tool like this to begin with.
Yeah, go to the next slide.
Oh, I'm not on the next slide, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, this slide. And then if you want to jump to the next one. Uh, so in here, we can also turn on any of the, uh, sidewalk issues. And as you see, they only populate on good or excellent condition sidewalks, they do not, um, activate on fair, poor, needs replacement. And on each one of these, it has the spot repair on whether it's obstruction, as if it's a utility pole or a fire hydrant. Meaning that doesn't meet ADA compliance, uh, whether it's some type of maintenance, shrubbery, a bush has overgrown it, some type of tree, low hanging bush. Uh, and then finally structural, is it a pop panel? Did something happen with construction and just a poor segment, uh, for a patch that went through that area? And then using this tool, we can work with our highway department, not necessarily a contractor, to go through and slowly start repairing these. To make sure that the good sidewalks stay in good condition and don't actually deteriorate the rest of it. And so these would be less of a contract fix, but more of something we could try to do in-house with our own crews. Uh, next slide. Uh, so finally, uh, we have all of the sidewalk, uh, all the curb ramp conditions. And every curb ramp, we also have an image when they went, went out and did the evaluation. So here you can see this is an, uh, an image of a good sidewalk. You can see that there's no issues with the concrete, it has the detectable warning panel, this one was probably done the last few years. If you go to the next slide, I had a good jump to a different area of town to find a ramp in poor condition. But you can see that it is in poor condition, the cracking going through it, no longer would be, uh, would need a replacement. And then replacement with the detectable warning panel to make sure it was still ADA compliant. And this is something that just by using the interactive map, we can find some of these other, um, ramps that are not in our areas of paving or sidewalk work. But that way we can slowly move forward towards that five oh four transition plan of, of, uh, making sure that everything is ADA compliant. Uh, next slide. Uh, so going to, this is the existing sidewalk. I just wanted to show you to it again, just so I can briefly discuss about how it's a disjointed network. Uh, you can see that there are large gaps, uh, and there's a multitude of reasons. Topography, uh, environmental, there could be culverts, wetlands, subdivisions that might have been added throughout the years. Uh, and then permitting and costly construction, just kind of leaving those gaps throughout town. So if you jump to the next slide, you'll see this is what, uh, the director Christine, myself and the assistant town engineer Trevor Collins. We looked through the town and tried to see what networks or what areas town needed sidewalk to get to. As well as seeing if it was practical to put one, a sidewalk there. Example is Acton Road is not highlighted here, as looking in some of the areas, whether it was the right of way width, stone walls. It doesn't seem feasible that we could even try to, to project one for the next twenty years. And that's why you'll see Robin Hill Road instead would be the primary route to get down into the center from, uh, I think it's, uh, corner. Thank you, Kate's Corner. And, and so that's kind of what we looked at and how we tried to break it up. Now, we gave this feedback to EP who then put it through that decision matrix and they then gave us back a list prioritized. Uh, un- unfortunately, um, the roads that were kind of, or the sidewalks at the top of that list, all averaged about one point five million dollars or more. And that just becomes a, a funding constraint that we're not able to do at this time. So we are looking to get grants, um, we are pursuing, uh, Parkerville Road, uh, to try to get a grant to then put in sidewalks down by the, the Bynum School. With, uh, the, what we did send to them, I'd want to mention that it is about fourteen miles of new sidewalk for a rough cost of thirteen million dollars. Next slide. Uh, so these would be the next steps that Christine had mentioned earlier. We're going to publish the two thousand twenty-three paving and sidewalk plan on the website. Utilize the paving master plan sidewalk, uh, master plan data, collaborate as a planning tool. Uh, we're not going to blindly just follow these though, we're not going to have it shoot out, this should be one and this should be second. Because that kind of removes any judgment calls or what would actually not working with utilities and not working with subdivisions or any other. The planning board or anything that's going on throughout the town. So it's just, uh, these are great tools that now we have and, uh, they are going to be run in-house through engineering. We do have a quite extensive history and, and running databases like this, so it is something that is, is well within our skill set. We do want to review the sidewalk master plan with, uh, committees. Uh, I have mentioned or been to BPAC and we are looking to reach out to others. We do have a recommended focus on existing sidewalks in the five oh four transition plan with current funding and the backlog totaling twenty-two million. That's not including the thirteen million of new sidewalk. Uh, and then new sections subject to funding availability, this is the grant that we are seeking in, in other areas. And then as far as new side, sections of sidewalk are added, we also have to have a consideration for snow clearance maintenance and responsibilities, as this is currently all handled by DPW. So one of the other constraints when we are looking for. So one of the other constraints when we are looking for new sidewalk sections throughout town. Does anyone have any questions or comments regarding the sidewalk database or sidewalk master plan inventory before, if you have any questions on the pavement, I could answer those two, and Christine can?
So I just have a question about that last bullet point. Who? Who would you consider the snow clearance maintenance responsibilities for some of the new sidewalks?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Who who would you consider to be responsible for some of the new sidewalks for the snow clearance?
So right now, we have a, we may, so we have a network of essentially forty-six miles of sidewalk. We clear twenty-six, twenty-seven miles of it. And depending on the snowstorm, sometimes we can get through it faster. Sometimes it takes us three or four days to get through it. We actually have a program where it's Route One, Route Two, Route Three, Route Four. Those four, sometimes it takes us four days. So as we add new sidewalk, we just have to think about how are we going to add pieces of equipment? Eventually, would we seek subcontractors to assist with it? I know other communities have had trouble with seeking that assistance in in hiring outside contractors. I also know previously at some town meetings, it was discussed about potentially requiring that responsibility on the homeowner, and I know that wasn't well received. So I mean, that, just not saying we want to promote that. But if we were to install thirteen miles of sidewalk tomorrow, we would just have to have a plan to see how, or even if we were to start to maintain the forty-six miles of sidewalk. We just have to think about how we would maintain it because we're, right now, we can't keep up. I would say this winter, we did a really, we had a much slower winter in terms of snow accumulation. But if if we get, especially if you get a storm and then two days later you have another storm, you're back at day one. So sometimes that that builds up on each other. So it's something we just have to consider and think about how we add that into our maintenance and if we have to add any equipment, people, other resources, or or change something. But we're not proposing that right now, it's just a consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Or even if, before you just talk about adding a sidewalk, just keep in mind that when we add sidewalks, there's a cost to keep them clear in the winter and maintain them in the summer.
And also, so when we do add new sections, we also try to maintain, I mean, ADA, you can add four-foot sidewalks. They like to see five feet, but you know, three feet is really the pinch point. You can add four-foot sidewalks. For us, for our equipment to get down the sidewalk, we like to see five and a half feet. So when we build new sidewalks, we want to build five and a half foot sidewalks. That's our, that's what we look.
And when you say five and a half, if there's a telephone pole, you want five and a half from the edge of the pole?
We try to, we try to get that as best as possible. If not, then, I mean, if if that, sometimes we see if we can skirt, there's going to be pinch points or a hydrant, but we try to build a continuing sidewalk at least five and a half feet wide.
So Paul, we have, we have the capital funding and the free cash that we allocated in Chapter ninety. What are, are there other potential funding sources for this, like through grant programs or? Development fees from redevelopment that?
Yeah, we get a little bit of money from the planning board, I mean, minor amounts of money.
That's actually another good point, is that this is a great document for us so that when development comes forward, we already have a list now. We can bring up that whole neighborhood or that area and say, we have these five obstructions. We need four ramps. So it's something that we could potentially require as part of that process to upgrade or upgrade sidewalks or create connections. So we'll use that tool also through that planning process.
This is great.
Because that's how it happened. In other words, when you look at the sidewalks that aren't disconnected, many of those were put in place by the planning board in the thought that future, particularly on Littleton Road, if you remember the developments that went in on Littleton Road, even like David Hetterson's one most recently and so forth, they were asked to construct sidewalks as part of planning board approval, the idea that eventually we would fill in the gaps.
So that's something you would keep an eye out for as you're reviewing?
Yes, so this will, this will definitely be, I mean, we've always, I think, looked at, looked at saying, well, what do we need? But now we have a document that spells everything out. So we just, as long as we keep this document live, it's it's very easy for us to say, this is, this area, or do we expand that area too? Maybe it's not needed right outside that development, but maybe just at the next intersection. It's just something to consider.
Yeah, this is a great tool now that you have to basically inventory everything we have in town, assess it numerically, and then, as Tony pointed out, you know, let the humans make decisions, you know, with this as their guiding document. So if this is maintained and so forth, this will be a fantastic tool. I had one question. Did the school committee or the, or Dr. Lang or anybody give any input into this?
So we have, yes, so we did talk to, I mean, this entire document hasn't been reviewed by him yet. But we did talk at great length to think about what would we want to see around proximity to school. So I know, actually, originally, when we were first looking at that heat map that Tony talked about, we were looking at just a half a mile around a school. But right now, it's, you know, potentially within two feet, two miles of school, someone could walk to school. So we did increase that radius, and it is, you know, it is a, it's, so, you know, side, walking wise, it might be two miles, but just the way the crow flies, we adjusted that distance to one mile. So we did receive some input from Dr. Lang, more so that he wanted to, you know, if there's anything within that air radius of a school. Also, we put a focus in terms of the heat map, the highest, you know, need or rating was a school. So if if we have a sidewalk missing around a school, that will help bump it towards higher on the priority list.
Yeah, I definitely understood that from the heat map standpoint. I just want to make sure that they get an opportunity to really look at this now that it's completed to give their input and their questions and so forth on on that, that's all. Because it's something that came up last year at town meeting. And something that came up, and it's probably something that should come up because, you know, the parents, you know, in the areas as well as the, you know, the school heads and so for each one of those schools probably know where their biggest issues are too.
So we will, I think that is a good point, is that like this is still a draft document that we're there. And so I think it is a good time to probably just connect with them and see if they have any comments.
I think the overall message is the numbers are daunting, you know, you know, because as she.
Seventy-five million dollars in totality between paving and sidewalk of a backlog.
Yeah, because at the beginning, she noted about the thirty-nine million backlog in paving, and then, and then that becomes a choice. If every dollar that's put in the sidewalk is a dollar that may not be put into the roadway condition. And then the same thing about adding, and so it's, it's daunting when you, as you said, once again, the legislature was, well, the House, the House acted last week to level fund two hundred million, again statewide for the eleventh year of Chapter ninety paving improvement monies. And the Senate's supposed to act this week, and we'll see what they do. But it appears, once again, it's going to be a one-year appropriation. We're hopeful that they'll get, that they'll come to resolution. If the Senate, if what happened last year and what could happen is if the Senate version differs from the House and they don't come to reconciliation, months could drag on, and that's what happened last year. So, but the bottom line is, is, you know, as we said, we're getting forty cents on the dollar that we had eleven years ago for roadway paving. And and you can just see, again, one point two million we had from the state. We put in, what, four hundred thousand in from our capital plan?
Yeah, four hundred thousand from capital, three hundred fifty thousand for sidewalks. And that gets you essentially a mile now.
Yeah, so you're basically, you're under two million dollars in annual funding, and we're, we're, we're at, you know, like I said, seventy-five million in backlog.
At least now you're making fact-based decisions.
Yeah, 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 we've got assessments.
Thing that we can control. Chapter ninety, we can't.
But at least it gives us an idea of why we're doing things and and where.
Exactly.
And, you know, we'll, we'll come back and and again, when we, we've got, we've got, they'll get going now, and the weather's improving, and then we'll look, look to this probably in the summer and fall, whether when the budget, the town's books are closed. We also may look at the ARPA funding. We still have some funding in ARPA that may be able to be used for this as well.
Paul, is there anything to stop like the planning board from saying to a developer, you're going to do this project, but we want you to pay money into a sidewalk fund or into?
Yeah, I mean, it's commonly known as linkage, or the idea of, you know, that that could be done. I mean, you could put it into a fund, you know, like they do for, you know, for parking and so forth. They put in so many dollars per parking space and so forth. And then there are individual funds. But again, it's going to put a small dent into the magnitude of what we're dealing with. But I think the more frequent thing is, is have them put the sidewalks in. So UMass West Campus gets developed, okay, put the sidewalk in along the roadway.
But for, use that example, on the other side, as you're heading down that road coming towards, as you're coming down Princeton towards north, that sidewalk is, a lot of that is covered in like decomposing leaves, and it's in disrepair. Could you say to them, fix it all the way down to Princeton?
Yeah, exactly. Yep.
What's that?
State.
The State Road.
All right, you went on that one, but you get my point, like, when you have a development like that.
Yeah, we we are looking to see how we could utilize some funds to see how we can improve that area potentially.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
And then before Christine leaves, she's going to give the brief monthly.
Couple more updates.
Monthly Traffic Safety Committee, very brief, because it's, you know, it's a March report.
We really do not have too much to update on the traffic. Just under current actions, traffic enforcement and speed monitoring in several areas, that continues with our police department. And then a speed and traffic study will be conducted in early April, April on Sylvan Ave. Under pending actions, I know this has been impending action for some time. We are working with a consultant. I'm still waiting for a proposal to come in to develop a schematic design and a cost for alternatives other than a rapid flashing beacon. We do know that, so originally, I think it was proposed at fifty or sixty thousand dollars for the improvements with the rapid flashing beacon. This project will have to expand the limits beyond, beyond just that intersection because you have to look at both the vertical and horizontal site distances. So just as a look quickly budgetary, it seemed like the project might be growing to a hundred thousand dollars. So also, what we're looking to see is we can, you know, hopefully quickly get into contract with our consultant to come up with a schematic design. But how do we fund that to move it forward? Potentially complete streets, we're just looking at some options right now. We just can't take a hundred thousand dollars out of our sidewalk plan right now. So it's just another project that we're just seeing how we can build this some, into some grant or some opportunity. And we do not have any completed actions to report on at this moment. Any questions?
And then the monthly ARPA.
Monthly ARPA update. So I do have a memo, and then it's the the attached updated monthly lists. I would say this update, monthly update, is more substantial, maybe just in the last couple of months. And really because of three or three or four projects. So we have, of the seven point nine million dollars, we've allocated now five point two five million dollars. That number is about sixty-seven percent of the total funds allocated. And also in terms of what we've invoiced, is actually saying about sixty-seven percent has been sent, has been spent. We are, and I will get into some of the specific highlights from last month, but we are now anticipating a larger overrun than we did in the last month, and I'll get into that in a minute. And we still, I guess, we're short of, and that amount is nine hundred sixteen thousand five hundred dollars. I can go over just those items.
Christine, could you just bend the microphone towards you more for Charles for telling?
Is that better? Sorry. So some of the highlights on the updated spreadsheets, I don't know if it's, if move over, please, to the the color-coded spreadsheet. So this is the color-coded spreadsheet that is updated monthly. Again, projects in green and blue are procured, and that was our goal. Blue is complete, green is still, still being completed. The projects in yellow are partial, partially procured, and the projects in red are not procured. And that, you know, the the projects highlighted in red is, our goal is to, so they all really turn blue and green. To go over, without going over all forty-six items, some of the highlights, if we go to number seven and number thirteen, they were bid together. We received the filed sub bids in mid-March, and then we received the bids March twenty-second, and it's actually before tonight for a recommendation to award. The overall budgeted amount for these projects was four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. One general contractor bid was received. We did receive multiple filed sub bids. The overall project came in at six hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars, which is actually seventy-eight percent increase from our original amount. We had carried a thirty percent contingency on that amount. We can estimate these costs. We went back and said, how could this have been? I think it's just, again, it's equipment, equipment costs are, you know, are sometimes doubled from what they were even during COVID. So we, it is a lump sum bid, we don't have a schedule of values. It was one bid. So what's, that's telling me is still the market is very select, contractors can select their work. We we do, we have worked with this contractor, Snowden Inc., they actually did the McKay Library, so they are highly reputable, and we've, we've worked with them, had great work with them. So that, that is a substantial increase. I also am recommending to hold a contingency of twenty thousand dollars into each account just because we we anticipate there would be some change orders on this, given such a large of a project. That, that is really the largest increase. So the overall project forecast for the two combined projects is eight hundred nine thousand five hundred dollars. Sorry, because I said six ninety-eight because that was without the filed sub bid and without the contingency. The next item to highlight is number twenty-five, the cardio metabolic screening by the police department. This was a very successful project that was complete. It did come in over, actually, we just were invoiced, invoicing. It was originally budgeted for thirty-five thousand, it came in at forty-seven nine hundred sixty-five. And that is just due to the higher enrollment, I think it was a well-received program. From what I hear, it went very well. Number three, there's no change in the the pricing, but we have fully procured this. So number thirty-four, culvert structure, culvert structural assessments. We have three hundred and twenty-five culverts across town. We are, we looked at some of the more critical ones that we know need some structural assessment. So this looks at, we're with Hoyle and Tanner, looking at fourteen culverts across town, doing a structural in that assessment. Also have some money in this scope to do some underwater assessment if needed, and also some preliminary design and costing, so then we can see how we need to build potentially fourteen projects. So that number thirty-four was fully procured. Are there any questions on the monthly update? Those are the highlights. There have been other invoices and incremental changes, but those are, I think, the largest items.
When I glanced over everything in general, it looked like maybe by the end of May, we'll probably be pretty close to understanding our costs?
Yes, I would say, I mean, our target, we're still targeting into the fiscal year, so we still have to bid, I know, so if you look at the projects in red, it's really the mechanical support. So that additional three-year project, we're going to put that out to bid soon. There's also, we're just opening bids, I think, next week for the modular repair units. Then if you go to like fourteen through nineteen, those are the testing and balancing projects. So I would say, yeah, I would, I do, I am pretty confident in saying that the, this last, I call it bust, I mean, it was such a, this large increase, is like, I think that's the largest unknown. We don't, because that was the question I had to my team, is what else? Like, you know, we estimated thirty percent overrun, is there somewhere else where we can see a seventy percent increase? And we don't think so. We think that was the largest hit, you know, in terms of a unknown. We're feeling, I mean, and who knows until we bid it, but we feel more confident in the the pricing that we've put forward and the remaining projects.
I guess I had a related question. So for those two HVAC lines that went like three hundred and fifty plus K over your original estimate, there's still other HVAC lines in here, I think, that are yet to be procured.
Yes.
So do you have, do you have any guesstimate as to like how bad that might get? Or is it?
No.
Is it really a question of kind of turning the crank on the procurement and seeing how the market responds?
So what we, we did, when we looked further at the two projects that we just bid, we think that the scope was, so it was from the two thousand sixteen Doran Woody Report, it just had some HVAC upgrades. We think the scope was, and it was, in that, the the planning at that level wasn't as complex. And so I think as we went through the design, the design became very complex and more costly, and equipment also increased. So I think that just compounded, and that made that a very expensive project.
Are the other ones more straightforward?
So the testing and balancing should be more straightforward. And then the other is the, because if you look at the senior center, and that probably is the last project that we will be bidding, we're working on the documents right now, that is a one point, just a, just short of one point two million dollars. And I, if that doubles, that's, you know, it's a huge number. But we believe that design has actually simplified. And so we think that number is, is a fair number.
Okay. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me just do a check-in, we've been over three hours, does anybody need a break?
We're going to be done in fifteen minutes, right?
Well, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, keep going, Paul.
All right, we'll, we'll quickly push you through, this is, it's like the. All right, we'll, we'll quickly push you through, this is like the end of the legislative session, it just goes on and on and on. Request for legislative earmarks in the FY twenty four state operating budget. Again, simplify, we've got three requests, and reaching out to departments, and I know Deb Sariani has been patiently wa- waiting online, so we're going to call upon her. The first one, we talked about last time, but something like, was lightning protection system at the South Row Elementary School for seventy thousand dollars because of the repeated lightning strikes and how it wipes out the alarm panel. The second one is food insecurity and nutrition programs at the senior center. Deb, are you still there? I, I just, she's, she literally has been on this call. Here she comes, there you go, Deb. You've been waiting, you've been there for three hours, I got, I'll let you wait.
I'm just here in case there are questions.
This one, this one Deb has been an advocate for, for multiple fiscal years, and it is an ongoing need at the senior center. Right, Deb, I don't know what, for the seniors that we serve. Again, through the, you know, through the Meals on Wheels program, and, you know, and again, they've just been buffeted by the high increased cost of food items and, you know, the commodities list being limited. So that's twenty five thousand. And then the final one came from Chief Spiny, and this is a replacement of the police department's incident command vehicle for seventy five thousand. This is the mobile command center that would replace a vehicle that you can see is over twenty-two years old. And that's the services operations center with, you know, radios, computer mapping capability. Again, whether it's a natural disaster, a major crime scene, missing persons, accidents, most commonly you would see it like on the Fourth of July parade, or the, you know, big school gathering events, or the holiday prelude and so forth. And so that's a seventy five thousand. In terms of this, I did speak to our legislate, House Representatives, meaning Representative Dosero, Elliott, and, and Cataldo. And basically, if we send them this list, they, by senses, they'll coordinate the submittal amongst the three of them. And I, I think they're all attainable. I mean, this, I don't, I don't think we're going to come back saying, oh, we got you one out of the three, or, you know. These, th- this is a realistic list. And then they'll submit their amendments in the next couple of weeks, and then we can see where we are at the end of the month of April, and then we can then do a submittal, probably of different items, to Senator Barrett, because you, you don't want to duplicate, because it doesn't get you anything to duplicate.
The Senate is in May?
Senate takes up the budget in May.
So we'll start working that next month?
Exactly. Yep, so, and again, that would just probably be one major item or a couple of smaller items. Because remember, he's, he's, he's got more towns, even though there's, you know, there's fewer senators, so. So anyway, I, I would seek the board's approval to submit this to our delegation for, for earmarks in the upcoming, House Representatives' version of the FY twenty four state operating budget.
Any questions, objections?
Just as long as we can maintain that van so it can roll with the antiques and the parade on the fourth.
That's just for the van, right, that's not.
That's the replacement of the, of the vehicle itself, right?
Yeah, it looks like a good list.
Okay.
I think we say thank you to Debbie for hanging in.
Thank you, Deb.
Well, thank you, I just wanted to be here in case you had any questions.
Okay, so next up is the survey results of the town committees. I'll explain what I did here, and you can tell me what your tolerance is for doing any more tonight. At the last meeting, the board asked me to try to group together what the actionable inputs were. So I, I still kept it sort of at the raw inputs, but what I did was I extracted from the survey only those things that were either potentially, potentially actionable, or comments that maybe a committee made that they took in action, and maybe that's like a best practice or something for us to consider. So the first column is the question number, and the questions are listed at the bottom. And then the input is the actionable input that I extracted for each question, and from which board or committee it came from. And then I left a blank space for us at some point to discuss, are there some actions that we want to take as a board or as the town manager against any of these specifically or in general? And so that's my comment. My question is, do you want to go through any of it this evening? Or do you want to take a look and with that as background, maybe come back to another meeting with some suggestions that people have thought out? Would that be okay?
That's actually what I thought when I read it today.
Yeah.
Went through it, I said, man, I need, we need some time. Turn through, there's a lot of information there.
Yeah.
How do you prioritize it?
Right, and, and it may be that there's a theme that we could, or there may be some that we say we can't address, but is this, is this, I guess, my first question is, is this something people can work with and go away and look at?
I can't.
We can come back at another meeting and go through it some more? Okay? I'm going to put it in the minutes that the board committed. Look at this and come back at another meeting, so, all right. And then the next thing on the agenda, Paul and I left the, the youth and young adult on there. I didn't know, we'll start with the youth part, if there was any update, status update or anything that you guys wanted to convey.
From the?
From this high school.
Yeah, we're just trying to coordinate a meeting today with, with Steve Murray.
Okay.
Sit down and go through, I've already sent him both the reports. So he's an opportunity to look them over, we're just trying to get dates with him now, probably be two weeks out anyway.
Okay. And then the second part of it, that we had said we wanted to, at some point, visit potentially a date in May to look at the young adult portion. And I don't know if you want to try to pick a potential date tonight, or?
Yeah, I think.
At some point, we have to start planning it.
Sure.
That's why I just left it on there as a check in.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think it needs to be decided tonight when, or even, you know, and then, and then what, too?
Right, well, so I guess that will be another action then for the board, because I think in, you know, mid-April, we're going to want to pick a date and what the function looks like and start planning it and publicizing it.
Yeah, I mean, if you want, I could, you know, I could write up something on, on that, and some, some ideas, and maybe throw out a, a time or two and location that would make sense.
Okay, is that okay with everybody? That'd be helpful, thank you, Pat. Okay, so moving right along, Paul, do you, the strategic plan one. I'll take the first attachment in the packet. Paul and I did meet after the last board meeting, and we used the Shrewsbury document and some other things, and we kind of went through and said, okay, if we were to create a requirements document, an RFP, or something for like an expression of interest, what would we want in it? And so what we said was the desired output would be a community-focused three to five-year plan to help guide us with policy goals, actions, and investments. We would want the process to help us validate the existing vision and values, or any modifications we want to that as applicable. And the second page has our existing vision and value statements. And then we realized we don't have a town mission statement, so we want to develop a mission statement for the town. And there's a lot of individual department, board, and committee mission statements out there, so possibly looking at those as part of this process and how they play into the overall town statements. And then, Paul, please jump in.
No, you're great.
She's getting hoarse, but she's doing wonderful.
So then the next section was strategic priority area. So this is basically, what are, you know, at the category or priority area level, what are those things that, where we want to drive outcomes? And so that would be informed by coming up to speed on the town operations and existing information. And we listed the major existing planning documents that we could think of there. Meeting with some of the key leaders in town to understand the boards and committees and how we operate, and get inputs on priorities. And then also a component of doing community input and community visioning, probably a mix of in-person and something online. And then once we have those strategic priority areas defined, well, identified, we'd want to define each of them, have a statement of definition, identify the goals over those three to five-year plans that we would then be using annually to define our detailed goals and actions by year. And then how do we know when we succeed, or how do we know when we get there in terms of a measurement? And then basically anything else that we haven't thought of that would help us inform implementation going forward. So from a process standpoint, I'll just pause there, that's what we had. Any comments so far?
Doing great.
Okay. And, and then at the bottom of page one, Paul and I talked about, well, who would be on this as kind of a steering committee? And you probably want to keep it ideally to, you know, a dozen or fewer if you can, but this is more than that. So you'd have the select board and the town manager, and then we said, okay, well, who are the boards and committees that have some of those major plans and policies we listed above? And maybe there's a representative from each of those. And then we know there'll be other stakeholders that need to weigh in, but we said, okay, we'll bring them in, like during the process as appropriate, but not as a core steering committee member.
Who's an example of that?
Who's an example of that?
Sustainability committee.
Maybe the DPW director.
So I only ask that sort of openly because I'm wondering where the Board of Health fits in.
The Board of Health might be an example, or the.
I don't know if they deserve in this list, or is someone you pull in, that's what I'm, I guess I'm getting at.
We, well, we had, and if they're not on this list, we had them as a, we would pull them in. It just, because it gets unwieldy after a while, but if you think we're missing somebody on the major pieces, then... And I think we also looked at, the school committee had a list of who they had, we looked at that one. I can't remember if Shrewsbury had a list or not. But, I mean, we, we still have time on that part, but this was sort of our first pass. So if we were to decide to go forward with an expression of interest or with an RFP, that was kind of the outline.
Look at who, who has the major planning documents.
Yeah, right here, Ken.
That sort of mirrors the committee. You know, the Planning Board master plan, the school's strategic plan, the open space recreation plan, which is Conservation Commission, Housing Production Plan, Housing Advisory Committee, age-friendly implementation plan, age-friendly GRAP. You know, I don't know of a public health plan document.
No, I get that.
Yeah, I'm not saying that, and.
Now that you've explained the logic behind that, no, I get that, that's, I'm in.
Versus a plan, yeah.
Right, exactly.
My thought when you were going through this was, the Board of Health plays such a
Oh, sure.
key role, but now that you've explained how you got there, I, I get the roadmap.
And it doesn't mean we don't include them, it just means that we're not asking them to come to every steering committee.
Meeting.
Meeting. And I think too, that these will all have like in, public input segments whenever the board, whenever the committee meets.
I just need to know how to, like, if, if a committee says to me, we didn't make your top five lists, how come? I want to be able to explain, well, you don't have a master plan.
Well, yeah, major plans and policies.
Yep.
Yeah, the other challenge with the Board of Health is it's only a three-person committee.
Because we're going to add another one.
No, no, it'd be easy, honestly, it'd be easy. I'd almost draft them if it was a five-person committee, because then you could pull somebody.
And I, what I, I think what we envisioned was even this part here, the community input and community visioning, like, we would probably reach out to every board and committee as part of that. It's just that you have to limit the number of seats on the actual steering committee.
I tried that.
Yeah, well, one of the biggest hurdles too, I still think, is that we're creating another plan.
Didn't work.
That's going to have some priority over a lot of these other plans, potentially.
Well, hopefully it'll be.
It should integrate, but, but it could actually change some of the other ones. Because some of them.
So that's, that's attachment.
I won't go there.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, some of them, you know, go into some strategic areas because there was a gap there.
Yep.
And so they were attempting to fill the gap, master plan's a great example. And, you know, if this plan goes into place, that master plan may change. That's, that's all it was. So that's why it's important that all those are involved.
Okay, Paul, I'm going to turn the second attachment over to you.
Yeah, as a follow-up, as I said, from the last meeting, is I, we did receive a document back from Jenny Ray, the executive director of the Northern Middlesex Council of Governments. I did not share the outline that, you know, Virginia just went through with her, because we were, those, they were taking place simultaneous. And what we have is a, is a letter, and basically, she estimates that NIMCOG could provide strategic planning process to the town for a price of eighty five thousand dollars, and it would almost take about a year to fulfill, which I think is sort of in line with what we saw in the, in the Shrewsbury plan in terms of costs, and is also slightly under the, you know, what the school department expended for their plan, the Chumps of Public Schools. So, you know, there, there's, you know, this is a, this is a costly effort in terms of expenditure, whichever direction we go, and or, and of time, and the effort of a lot of people. So I think it, it, it did give me an insight, because, you know, I think we should consider NIMCOG, but as you can see, there, even if NIMCOG were to assist us, then, you know, it's really not a major differential in terms of the, the cost to the community. And I think, I think, I know Jenny's very interested and anxious to do this, not only for Chumps or for other communities, but we would, we would have to look to see, you know. I, I think as you, you mentioned at previous meetings, the board is, we, we probably would weigh them with others who could provide this, because, you know, it's, it's a major, it's a major effort and undertaking.
What if we went to the, the path we started on and developed an expression of interest, and had NIMCOG respond to that as well? Like with some refined input from us? And, and put it out there.
Yeah, we'll probably get.
What does the board think about that? And then we would, maybe we would get at least some range of what the art of the possible is.
I like that.
And as I recall, they've never done it before, correct, NIMCOG?
Not, not like this.
Not like this, yeah. Okay. Going on that.
Okay.
So I, I guess, Paul, we could, we could work on an expression of interest and bring it to the board for review sometime in the next month or so, is that reasonable? I know that we got a lot with town meeting and stuff going on.
And that's, and that's our next agenda item, is our meeting schedule for April. So yes, we'll, we'll do that again the next month. So as we depart March with April first being on Saturday, the next item is a week from Thursday, which would be the reorganization meeting, which is brief. Basically, that night we'll have the packets, which is just over a week and a half from now, for the meeting on the tenth. And that's what I indicate, we'd, we'd have a draft town meeting warrant, you know, special town meeting warrant, as well as the other big item on the tenth, traditionally is the board's recommendation on the thirty articles for town meeting. So those, those would be the big items on the tenth. Then you run into the holidays, the seventeenth being Patriots Day, the following Monday being town meeting, which I think will go two evenings. And if town meeting does complete on the second evening, then we would be back in this room on the, I'm sorry, I should say Monday.
Monday the first?
I'd say Monday, I'm sorry, I don't know why that says Tuesday, but that should be Monday, May first, select board meeting.
So is everyone okay with the holding both April tenth and April eleventh if we need it?
I, I can't do April eleventh.
Okay.
April eleventh may be a problem.
Well, April, April tenth, we're definitely having a meeting.
Yes.
Right, but, so can we pick a potential backup date if we need it to get through the town meeting warrant articles?
I could do twelve or thirteen.
Hang on a second.
Although I know twelve is Planning Board night, and they usually meet in this room now, right?
I'm not going to be able to do twelve.
Okay.
It's a public hearing, but I have to be at.
Thirteen?
Thursday, we could be bumping into the Finance Committee, because if, if we've got a special town meeting, they're going to, now you're two weeks away, they're going to need to review our, the articles of the warrant that night.
I could potentially do a daytime meeting if people want to do that. I don't know how, if you can get people to do the articles.
Yeah. So, I mean.
Their department, if you.
I mean, we could, if you wanted to do earlier, I mean, Finance Committee starts at six, we could ask them to push back to seven, and then we could meet like five to seven or something, if we had to, or something.
Or four.
On which day?
I was thinking earlier in the day, but.
Four, like, or?
A four o'clock commitment that day, but.
The thirteenth.
On what day?
Thirteenth of April.
Or even like that afternoon, like at noon or something, is that what you're thinking, Virginia?
Well, that's what I was wondering, if we did, if, if we put like the ones with the departments briefing towards the end, and if we had to spill over to the backup date, they could come during the day and brief us.
Yeah, if necessary. Again, this, Finance Committee went through the articles pretty efficiently, and, and so I don't think it's a complex, it's not a complex warrant, and, you know, there's, I think of the thirty articles, I think there's seven of them on consent agenda.
The other option would be Tuesday, the eighteenth.
I have a, I have a conflict that night, too. But we could do, if we could do it during the day.
Is one an hour and a half? Not a day, it's one and a half.
I'm just looking for a backup date, in case we need it. I can do the day, during the day, on the eighteenth.
Lucky girl.
Yeah, during the day, I could on the eighteenth.
Do later in the day, on the eighteenth.
I can do later in the day, like, what, what's your, what's your endpoint?
That's school vacation week, right?
Yeah.
Just, I might be out of town that weekend, I do not know yet. I do not know yet.
I meant earlier, I'm just, I'll be guilty, I can do it anytime.
Well, I mean, if we're talking about during the day, then we could go back to Tuesday, the 11th. I mean, I was thinking we would do a regular.
Okay, Tuesday, the 11th during the day is the backup?
Yeah.
Although we'd have to post it.
Yeah, Fire Station at 4:00 that day.
What she's saying during the day.
No, I'm saying like noon, 1:00, 2:00.
I have a noon in Boston that day. I do work.
The 12th during the day? Oh, the, it would have to be in the after, early afternoon probably, right, because of the police thing? Or do we just commit to a long meeting on the 10th if we need it?
Well, why don't we wait till the 10th?
Yeah, I think, I, yeah, we could always continue.
If we're not going to do it till Thursday, then we have.
We could post on Tuesday anyway.
Then we have time to post.
I will do the best to limit the agenda to just that.
I was just going to say that, same thing, George. Could we come in early on the 10th?
Yeah, I could start earlier on the 10th.
We start at 5:00 instead of at 6:00 if you wanted to.
That's a really good idea, George.
Yeah. You know, all of a sudden, I'll have a team.
And then we're still going to go till 9:30?
No, no.
Bring dinner in.
I can start at 5:00.
We can start at 5:00, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Bring some bowls of snacks.
You want to do that?
Yeah. Okay. It's done. Okay.
See how limber we are.
Maybe at 5:00 PM, okay.
Okay.
All right, real brief on bid awards. As Christine Clancy mentioned earlier, we have the bid award for the Byham and Harrington School HVAC improvements, and we're seeking the board's approval for the bid from GC Prime. Bid was TE Snowden, it's a bid amount of $698,000.
If not, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the field sub bids and general contractor bids for the Byham School and Harrington HVAC improvement projects to GC Prime bidder TE Snowden in the amount of 698,000.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5:0.
Town Manager reports, real, real briefly, as is in there, the Southwell Boat Launch is now closed at the direction of the state to kayaks and large canoes. Signage is out there. DPW is going to go out in next week, the end of next week, with them to do some temporary repairs to the launch so that it can be used for emergency police and fire access in the event that's necessary for patrols and other emergency rescue on the river. And then the good news is, is as of, we were, we got word today that the state is already in the procurement process of procuring engineering services for the design of the replacement of, of the boat launch, which, as we noted last time, could be a year and a half plus or minus in terms of duration. And Representative Elliott is involved with that, and I think it's helpful to, you know, keep this thing moving along. So that's where we are on the Southwell Boat Launch closure. Good news is on the Congressional Airmark request for the Parkerville Road, as Director Clancy mentioned earlier, the project did, has, you know, is being submitted by Representative Trey Hand. You know, it's a $350,000 project to put a sidewalk along Parkerville Road to, towards the Byham School, which is one of those critical areas. And we did get letters of support from Superintendent Schools Dr. Jay Lang, Principal for Debt, and from State Representative Simon Cataldo. So that's, that, that was a third late request that came in from the Congresswoman's office. They wanted another letter of support, and Representative Cataldo's office stepped, himself stepped up real quickly. And then the third one was sort of a request that came in since the agenda for the last meeting, and it was from a Chelmsford resident who lost their, back in the end of last December, lost their two-and-a-half-year-old daughter to sudden unexplained death in childhood, which I think we, we, us, all the folks used to call it SIDS, sudden infant death syndrome. Now it's referred to as sudden unexpected death in childhood. And the request was, and she was reaching out to the State House and the, and then including, you know, the Representatives and Governors Office and to the community saying, is there a way that the town could do a shine a light program, in this case in blue and yellow, you could commemorate the month of March, which was the dedicated for sudden unexplained death in childhood? I shared this with department heads and said, you know, we've never really done a lighting thing in the town, and what do you think? You know, because oftentimes we get things, well, could we light something up in purple for Alzheimer's Month and so forth? Anyway, what came back was, what about the monuments on the town common? And we've illuminated that in the wintertime with the wreaths and everything for the holidays. And so we were quickly able to, with the assistance of DPW facilities, we were able to illuminate the monument you see in the photo there in blue and yellow, you know, for, for this. I can tell you, you know, I, you know, I asked people to go by and give me a sense on it. I took a photo and sent it out, and the response has been really positive from department heads, and I notified the, the author of this letter, and she was just thrilled that somebody assisted, reached out to this. I have two thoughts in this. One is, I think the monument should be illuminated all times, quite frankly, you know, meaning with natural, you know, natural-looking lighting, because I think it's a nice presence that we've seen in the holidays, and I think it looks nice when you go by the common. And then I can work with DPW to do a permanent install, much like we do for the flagpole at the common. But the other question comes up is, do we want to do the, handle these requests for the lighting? And what came to mind was the flag policy. And I don't want to get into that kind of a thing, but, because this isn't, you know, and that's, and honestly, I think these requests, I'd like to have them come in, like the proclamations that come into the board. I handled this one, you know, almost like as a pilot to see, you know, can we do it? How would it look like, what it was? And my thought would be if the board were to support this, then I would think we'd handle those, much like the proclamation, everything else is, that they be done in advance, they come to the board, the board approved the request, so we go into the government speech kind of a thing. So, you know, but I guess that's sort of where I'm at with this thing is, is this sort of came out of the blue, we, we addressed it, and, but I think, I dig, now, I guess we have just something to consider. And again, it doesn't have to be answered tonight, is, but is this something that we would like to do? And it can be beyond that, but I, but the one that, you know, you know, you could illuminate the front of the police station with blue, or you could do the town offices and so forth, but this really, you know, come out, you know, I think came across as, you know, appropriate for the town. And as I said, I, aside from whether you want to do it with colors, I, I think, again, respecting that it's a common and the board sets policy for the community, I, I just offered the suggestion that we probably should illuminate the monument year-round with lighting, energy-efficient lighting, mind you. I don't want to use any.
Paul, question. So, I have two thoughts on that. The first one is, if you're going to illuminate it with lighting, can we make, spend a little bit extra money, make it the one that we can control the color?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Exactly, either with bulbs or filters.
And then my second one is, instead of sitting there and saying, we're going to do this for SUDC, how about in honor of a deceased citizen? Because in that way, someone else can't come forward and say, well, I mean, if you want to honor another deceased citizen in whatever they passed from, fine. But instead of saying, we're doing a cause, because then someone can't come forward and say, well, I want my cause. Let's honor a deceased citizen.
Would you, but would you limit it to that? Or in other words, I could think like 4th, like we could, we could, like 4th of July, we could put red, white, and blue around it.
Yep.
You know.
Christmas green and red.
Christmas green and red. You know, if, but again, do we, do we want to go into things like Alzheimer's in purple and, or?
Well, if you had, if someone came forward and said, I lost my, my dead Alzheimer's, would you honor him next, during Alzheimer's Month for it? And you could put it on the town website, we're honoring the citizen.
I, yeah, I don't, I don't want to get into the, well, Ukraine is blue and yellow, and that's like the flag thing. So I know we don't want to go there.
Right.
But do we want to do?
But if you do that, I think you're going to do the same thing we talked about with the flag.
Exactly.
You have to predetermine.
Exactly.
We're going to do this on these days and that's.
Yeah, I mean, do you want it green for St. Patrick's Day? I don't know.
Can we get, can we get input from town council?
I don't want to go there.
Sure.
Yeah, I don't think we would.
Yeah, but that's why I'm saying, I'm not doing a cause, I'm honoring a deceased citizen.
But do you want it for, I mean, do you want it green for St. Patrick's Day?
No.
No, okay, no, but, but we want it green and red for Christmas.
No, I want to honor this person's request for their daughter. I want to find a loophole so we can honor this request for his daughter.
I want it white for the holidays, you know.
Let's put it this way, I, I think illuminating it is a great idea.
Okay, that's, I'll start with that.
Colors though, and all that stuff, I think that's a DVD.
Yeah, I, I think that's tough.
Okay.
And I think we can't decide that tonight.
I'm not asking you to decide, but I will, all right.
I'd like input from council on that.
We probably need about seven attorneys to help us.
Well, at least, can you do the color? Because if it's the 4th of July, it'd be nice that it goes red, white, and blue.
He'll have the color capability, but the decision about like honoring.
Color capability doesn't cost anything. Okay? I can make my Koopa turn different colors from here. It's easy.
It's a little bit more.
No, it isn't.
All right, that completes my report. I will work on the illuminations.
I'll show you.
I, I just have three quick appointments for you this evening. Elizabeth Hasty to the Arch and Technology Education Fund for a term ending June 30th, 2024. Joshua Warhurst to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee for a term ending June 30th, 2025. And Nancy Polley to the Roberts Field Advisory Committee for a term, expired term ending June 30th, 2023.
Any questions? If not, take a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the town managers' appointments as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5:0. And now we have a select board appointment?
Yeah, I think, yeah, the, if you, I'll be real brief. This is the tenant Ford member of the Housing Authority, which was, you may recall, a couple years ago, the legislature changed the law, you put in person for the remainder term or the interim term. Now it's, now it's the full term. Reached out to David Hettison, so forth. The only request that came back was the incumbent from Judith O'Connor, and so that would be for a, for a five-year term ending April of 2028.
There's no discussion, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Judith O'Connor to the Chelmsford Housing Authority for a three-year term.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5:0. Next up, we have meeting minutes. Are there any amendments to the March 13th meeting minutes? If not, I'll take a motion.
Make a motion to approve the Select Board regular meeting minutes for March 3rd, 2023.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5:0. I have an announcement on releaseability for executive session minutes. The minutes for February 27th, 2023, segment 5, have been released. Liaison reports, Mark?
I'll have anything today.
George?
I'll do it.
Pat?
Uh, yeah, I have a few things. A week or so ago, I went to the firefighter academy for graduation. We had a firefighter graduate, Christopher Hillman. He has, I believe he started his, his tenure here at the Chelmsford Fire Department. So congratulations and welcome to Christopher Hillman. Two things from the library. One is, they have announced a one book for this year. It's a little bit later than they usually do it. The book is called Migration by Charlotte McGonighe. It's a, I read it last week, it's a pretty easy read, it's a, it's a good book. And Charlotte will be here, well, she'll be here remotely on May 25th to talk about her book. And also wanted to mention about the, at the, we'll have a new library director. Leslie Kimball was selected by the library trustees to replace Becky Herman as the library director. And lastly, on Wednesday, this coming Wednesday, March 29th, is National Vietnam War Vet, Vietnam War Veterans Day, and there will be a brief ceremony at the Veterans Park at 1:00 PM on Wednesday, March 29th.
Thank you. Ken?
I'm all set.
I just have a couple. As Paul mentioned, the Finance Committee is going to be meeting this Thursday to vote on the town meeting warrant article recommendations. The Planning Board's next regular meeting is April 12th. They will be starting at 6:30 with a work session with council on open meeting law, and then the hearings that are scheduled for that evening. There are new public hearings for 25 Wellman Ave for a lighthouse school addition, and for 18 to 20 Chelmsford Street to demo an existing accessory building and construct a new two-unit residential building. And the public hearing for 264 Groton Road is expected to be continued that evening. And I just have a comment on the age-friendly. If you recall at our last meeting, Fred Brusseau presented the age-friendly implementation plan, and he shared it with the Massachusetts Age Friendly Director, who basically really praised our committee for their collaboration on that and classified it as simply amazing. And the director also said that he was going to share Chelmsford's successes with the national team as some good examples of implementation. So congratulations to that committee.